Calling to order the special meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. It is April 17th, 2024. We are starting later than scheduled today. We were supposed to start at 6:00 PM. We had some issues from the storms with electricity and HVAC. And I want to give a special shout out to Matt Lowe, our amazing HVAC engineer within the district, because this is two nights in a row that he's come back after hours to save us. So we can proceed with our meeting tonight. And we have electricity, so that's great. All right. Trustee Noble, can you please take attendance?
Everyone is present and accounted for.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to section 2A, the community viewing and feedback opportunity. All of these meetings are open to the public and being livestreamed, cable cast, and are recorded for later viewing. Recordings and information on the superintendent search is available on the board's education webpage. All right. Moving on to... Might be missing a page here. But the rest, the item on the agenda? Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Moving on to the next section, we will begin with our first round interview of Mr. Billy Schellenberger. He is the superintendent of Clausen Public Schools in Clausen, Michigan. If Tim could bring him in.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Got some light reading for you here.
Very light.
Thank you.
So nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Hello.
Yes, sir. Pleasure.
Nice to meet you.
Hi Billy, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you as well.
Nice to meet you.
You as well. Thank you.
How's it going?
Great, you?
Pleasure.
Good to see you. Thank you.
All right. Are you set?
I think so.
All right, good.
Ready to roll?
We are, yeah. Good evening. On behalf of Bloomfield Hills Schools, I would like to welcome you to the interview for the position of superintendent. I'll take a few minutes to briefly describe our format. We have allotted 90 minutes for the interview. There will be 20 questions from the board. Toward the end of the interview, time permitting, we will give you the opportunity to ask questions of the board and make a closing statement. We will let you know if time is becoming an issue and there is a need to pick up the pace of the responses. We have a clock up here that I will start after my little introduction. And when there's 20 minutes left, we'll turn it around and show it to you just to let you know that there's 20 minutes left.
Awesome.
For those watching this interview in the audience, we welcome your feedback. Feedback can be provided by completing the paper forms available in the room and turning them into Mr. Tim Stein of the Michigan Leadership Institute. Feedback with the Board of Education can also be found by shared... Also be shared by scanning the QR code or completing the electronic form, which can be found at bloomfield.org/feedback. Although the task of choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of the Board of Education as the elected representatives of our community, we value and seriously consider the input of all of our stakeholders in the process. We will now begin the interview with two opening questions. So I will ask the first two opening questions, and then we will rotate to each board member to ask three, and then we'll reconvene for some of your feedback at the end.
Great.
All right.
Sounds good.
Well, go ahead and start. Mr. Schellenberger, the board has had the opportunity to review your application materials, but many audience members have not. Please briefly review your background and share what makes you interested in becoming the superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools.
Okay. I'll start by saying thank you. I owe you a debt of gratitude for the opportunity. This is spectacular for me, and I'm excited to sit here tonight with you all, so thank you. It's truly an honor. I'll start with the professional side of life. We'll say I'm proud to sit here as the Clausen Public School Superintendent. Have been in Clausen Public Schools for six years, four as middle school and high school principal, and two as superintendent. Honored to serve that community, serve a phenomenal board, and what a pleasure to go to work there every day, truly. So six years in Clausen. The... What drew me back to Clausen, I'll slide back a couple of positions and districts. I was a teacher, high school teacher at Birmingham Seehome. That's where I cut my teeth in public ed. Was a freshman English teacher and a leadership teacher. So freshman for four hours and senior leaders for one. It was quite the contrast. While I was there, I was the boys varsity basketball coach at Clausen. So that's what drew me back and led me back to Clausen and the principalship there. Between that, Northville Public Schools, Northville High School as an assistant principal, what a pleasure to work for and honor to work for a man named Tony Koski. He's the principal there today, his 10th year, and last year he was the MASSP Principal of the Year. So to learn from that man was quite the honor. So I owe him a debt of gratitude for all the leadership work that we did together and that he taught me. So Birmingham Seehome, Northville, and now Clausen, finishing year six in Clausen to as superintendent. Prior to, as you saw in my resume, prior to that, I have a unique path. For 10 years from college until, we'll call it early 30s, I was in pharmaceutical and medical device sales. And I'm the son of a high school principal, single dad, who I went to school to be an educator, and when I graduated, he said, "Don't do it." So I went to the sales route. And in retrospect, I wish I would have listened to my gut on that one, because that would have been pretty awesome to start as a 23-year-old teacher. But learned some great things in the private sector. That was... And still have great relationships from that time. But got the itch, really wanted to scratch it related to impact and laying your head down on the pillow and feeling like you did something today. So at 34-years-old, I went student taught at Utica Eisenhower High School, and here I am. So from a personal perspective, I live two miles north and west of here, and I live with my wife Kristen and son Stone, who's nine, he's a third grader. We're in a pocket of Bloomfield Hills that's actually Birmingham School. So he goes to West Maple Elementary School. And what a gift to have him in that district and at that school. So we spend a lot of time together. It's important to be a present dad and husband, and that's one of the things that has drawn me here today, one of the many. But we spend a lot of time in the area and have embedded ourselves over the course of eight years in Bloomfield Hills. And, you know, it's time to take that step. So I'll transition to the why. I know you said briefly, and I'll close it here. So the why. You know, for eight years, I have spent a lot of time commuting to Clausen. Amazing place. Commuting to Northville, amazing place and communities. And I've never led in the community where I lived. And I feel like it's time to embed myself in it and have a horse in the race, so to speak, and really be a part of leading where I live. And certainly, one of the best public school systems in the Midwest, if not the country here, in the community that I reside. And I voted, you know, for bonds and things, and I'm proud to certainly be a yes vote for all of us. That's important to me, and the timing is right for that. On the backside of that, being a presence with my family. Again, love Clausen, but it's a little bit of a commute, and to be able to be here locally would be fantastic for that balance. So multitude of reasons, but those are two significant ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Given your understanding of the Bloomfield Hills School District, what is the most critical short-term priority we need to address? And what is the most critical long-term priority we need to address? How would your background and skills help us address these short and long-term priorities?
Short and long-term priorities. Well, I think there's going to be a theme tonight, a few themes for me and my leadership style, and I'll start with one that would be a short-term and long-term for me. Right out of the gate, it's culture. You know, I'm a culture builder. You know, that's... District culture is important to me. And it's every day. You know, I equate it to the 100% sales commission salesperson. You have to wake up every day and sell something, right? To eat and feed your family and, you know, pay your rent. That's culture. Every single day as a leader, especially in the public ed space, you have to wake up every day and get after it pertaining to building a strong culture where people want to be. So certainly that would qualify, that would check the box for short-term and long-term, in my opinion. I think that's imperative. And I have a feeling over the course of this evening, I'll talk a lot about culture, because that's very, very important to me as a leader. You know, obviously, it's in the climate that we're in with public ed related to enrollment and changes, and it's so much different today than it was five and 10 years ago. Obviously fiscal responsibility is imperative. And I'll say this, it's... That can also check the short-term and long-term box, because I think that's a priority right out of the gate. Clearly, people are doing a great job. You should be commended for the work that's being done here, obviously with your bond and with rightsizing and obviously at, you know, fund balance being near 20% is spectacular. So, well done. So it's continuing that work, understanding it, but that never goes away. And in the climate of decreasing enrollment, which over the course of the last five years, 24 of our 28 districts in Oakland County Public Districts have decreasing enrollment, and Bloomfield and Clausen are two of them. We have to pay attention to it. And fiscal responsibility is a big part of that. So both short-term and long-term. And again, this, my final one, we'll check the box for you on both, I think. And it's... This was in no particular order, certainly, but safety is something that is certainly a high, high priority for me as a leader. You know, in a smaller district, we wear a lot of hats, and one of those hats for me is the safety guy, the safety director. Myself and our facilities and operations director, we do it. I'm the ALIS trainer, our active shooter trainer. I'm our guy in the OAC meetings every week talking about safety related to our bond work. And that will also never go away. And, you know, when I put my dad hat on, you know, I want somebody leading my son's district, and he's fortunate to have a phenomenal superintendent in Mbika Roberson doing it, but I want that feeling that it's a priority for my son. So putting the dad hat on, knowing that I'm responsible for 1,200 young Stone Schellenbarger's in Clausen, that's the lens that I view it from, and that won't stop. So that is right out of the gate. It's important, and certainly that will never go away, long-term as well.
Thank you. All right. The next set of questions will come from trustee Van Gemmer.
Okay. My three questions will relate to district relations. First question, maintaining healthy relationships with the school and community stakeholders is important to the Board of Education. Please share with us how you have gone about building and maintaining successful relationships with all members of the school community.
This is my wheelhouse. I've got to be honest. This is where I thrive. And it's tough to say that, because here I am sitting here talking about myself, which, you know, humility is important, you know, but I guess this is the hour that I'll do it, you know, this one time, certainly, and it's important to... Because I want you to understand how I lead. And I lead through human-to-human interaction every single day. So my goal as a superintendent of Clausen is to be in at least one building a day, and sometimes up to all five. And it happens, and I can proudly say that I accomplished that goal. And that's how I build relationships. If I'm leading from my office, I feel like I'm failing. And, you know, with, you know, strong Wi-Fi everywhere and laptops, we can answer emails anywhere. So I'm going to where people are. And, you know, that's what I thrive on, and that works for us in Clausen. I'm proud to say that relationships are rich for me, and I hope that... And think that those in Clausen would reciprocate that. But, you know, that's where it starts, presence and visibility. And again, that will never go away. It can't, from my perspective, philosophically as a leader. So I'm going to be in buildings. I'm going to be in cafeterias. For example, today I was in a 35-minute Student Advisory Council meeting with 15 middle schoolers and then two lunches. And, you know, spending time with kids, spending time with custodians, spending time with our administrators and our lunch ladies. That's how you do it. You don't do it from your office, and you don't do it over email. So, you know, that philosophically is where it starts for me. And, you know, the transition from principal to superintendent can be a concern for some, because you think that you may move away from that space where kids are. And, you know, being a student-centered leader who thrives on relationships, you have to carve it out the right way and be very intentional about that work as a superintendent and go to where those people are. So whether it's community members, whether it's events, whether it's cafeterias and hallways, and you name it, I will be there. And that's how you build those relationships and maintain them. And I'm proud to say that, you know, kids from Birmingham and kids from Northville and kids from Clausen who are long since graduated, those relationships still stand, and those are important to me.
Thank you. What are some examples of community activities in which you have provided leadership? And in what ways did that benefit your district?
Community activities? Two come to mind. One a little... One's, you know, a pretty deep and pretty important... They both are. Let's start with the first one. And every month I do what's called Sit with the Soup. It's a coffee chat opportunity for me to connect with our community. And I rotate mornings for those who can have flexible schedule. And then, for example, the last one I did was 5:30 in the evening at Three Cats in Clausen, great restaurant, by the way. Shameless plug, but phenomenal, they're incredible hosts to us. So it attracts. It's great. It's an opportunity to sit for 90 minutes-ish and have a very informal conversation, connect with our community. You know, and I think that that's impactful for our district, you know, because it shows continued transparency, which is important to our board and important to me, and keeping a strong line of communication open in a different capacity. You know, again, not through an email. This is me, and we're sitting having casual conversation over coffee, and it's been very fruitful for us as a district. That's one. The other one, you know, it's sometimes tough to talk about, but just a little bit over a year ago, we were impacted pretty greatly on February 13th by a traumatic event at Michigan State University, and one of our nearest and dearest students was killed on that campus that evening, and I'll never forget it. February 14th, we, you know, you get a phone call at 5:00 in the morning, and off you go. And it's something that certainly impacted us greatly. It's a kid who was a three-sport athlete and scholar athlete into my Trojan Leadership Council in forensic science at Michigan State. She was the young lady that you want your son to meet someday. Mom's a teacher in our district, dad's on our board, and known them since she was a kindergartner. So with that, here's this trauma, here's this crisis, and have to lead through it, and that's what we did, and I'm proud of the work we did. The part related to... The aspect of the community tie-in, how it benefited us. It benefited our district and our community, because we healed together. We planned together, we worked through it together, we had events together out in the community, and it gave us an opportunity to support each other. And here's our community just wrapping their arms around us and that family. And to be able to be in that space with so many people, it's odd to talk about this as a benefit, but you go through this together, very traumatic, and then you come out of it together in a space that grows you closer and helps you heal, because we all needed to do that. So, you know, that's still ongoing, and we could talk about that being an ongoing, you know, community events and activities. But, you know, that's one that will forever be... We will forever be impacted by, on a number of fronts.
Thank you. Effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Please describe the type of communications students, staff, parents, and the board should expect to receive from you.
Communication. So important to be extremely balanced. Nobody wants 10 emails a week from the superintendent in their inbox, right? But they want to be informed. You know, that's... So it's crucial. So the first thing that comes to mind is balance. The second thing that comes to mind with this question about communication, and we'll talk about both, is diverse levels of communication. So right now, how I communicate at Clausen is standard, through email, of course. Big proponent of the personalized phone call around important events during the year, whether that's breaks, reminders, things of that nature. It's a personal touch that I think is important, and this goes back to culture building and relationships. The amount of equity we get from parents receiving the phone call, heading into holiday break, and then playing Mr. Shell on the phone for their first grader is... The conversations have been rich around that and so fun. So, you know, things like that are important, that personal touch. And no disrespect to districts that don't do that and have the automated calls, but we like to mix it up and really offer that. That's another important piece. I talked about opening ourselves up to the community, the Sit with the Soup opportunity, and I open myself up every day at pickup and drop-off. This morning, I was at Kenwood Elementary School during drop-off and having conversations with parents on the sidewalk. That's important to me, too, and those are some of the best conversations that I've had. So one thing I added this year was a newsletter, quarterly newsletter I committed to from my office, from me. It's about celebrations and, you know, from each building, pictures and fun, and committed to it. And it's a heavy lift, but it's a great one. And, you know, so that's another diverse aspect of communication that parents receive now and would in Bloomfield Hills. So I go at them from different angles and, you know, keep them guessing on when they're going to hear from Mr. Shell, but certainly keep it very balanced. You know, balancing, making sure our community is communicated with and everyone is communicated with. And also, when we don't need to, it's okay to not. So we've struck that balance in Clausen, and I'm very proud to say that I think our communication is well done.
Thank you. No worries. So my questions are centered around political awareness. Superintendents are often faced with challenges of making decisions when there is no clear right answer, and members of the community are split on the right path forward. Talk about a time when you're faced with a difficult decision where there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision either way you went. How did you go about making that decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined was best?
That is a good, long one right there. I appreciate you being up here. That's fantastic, because I would have likely asked you to repeat it, but no need, so thank you. No, I think I'm good. This is... This seems to be an easy one for me. Let's talk about the bond, which I think you're all familiar with. You know, we've gone through two bonds. We're at $80 million now in work. And when you talk about and then execute closing buildings, hot-button topic, right? Emotions run high, and I get it. I would be disappointed to lose West Maple Elementary School and down the street from us. I understand. We have two tradition-rich elementary schools, neighborhood elementary schools. One has 150 kids in it, which is hard to believe, and another one has about 400. And we are going to close one of them completely and converge both elementaries onto a centralized campus as we rightsize, and a new building, 100-year-old building that we're refurbishing is going to be fantastic. But we're demolishing one of those buildings and selling that building to a developer for a number of reasons. You lay out the bond in 2020 and 2021 and things of that nature with details, and people kind of pass it by. But when the rubber meets the road and you start to get serious about the conversation and these things are actually happening, which they are right now with that particular elementary school, the board meetings, you know, can get interesting related to comments and public forum, and we have been met with opposition on this one. A minority of, we'll say, our community, but it was there. And it's now gone, and I can say why. Because we were so transparent as a board, and I have to give so much credit to our board in terms of execution, transparency of all of this, this bond work, that the quiet majority came out eventually and talked about, this is what they said they were going to do from day one, they've had public forums about it, Mr. Shell talks about it at a Sit with the Soup. Any level of transparency that you would need is there. And it slowed it down, and we're doing it for the right reasons, and that's what you have to talk about. Those reasons are kids. If we don't do this, I'm concerned about our district thriving. I'm concerned about operational cost. I'm concerned about enrollment. You know, we're hoping to 40 homes go there, and, you know, if you get 1.5 children per household maybe, or two or three, that would be fantastic for our enrollment. So it's so we can remain fiscally or financially solvent, it's so we can thrive. And knowing how important our public schools are period to communities, Clausen epitomizes that. It's a two-mile-by-two-mile space. And if the public schools thrive, our community does and our city does. And these are decisions that were well thought out with every voice in the room you can imagine, municipal leaders, parents, students, administrators. And I led those committees, and we put those voices in the room to make those decisions, and now we're executing those. But it's been a heavy lift related to a little bit of pushback on it, and understandably so. We sit and we listen and extend those conversations, because it's important to people to be heard. And when it was all said and done, I think that's what it was. They just simply wanted to be heard, and we did that. And I think we'll call it agree to disagree. They at least respect our decision and why we made it, and I think that that's important.
If you can please share a specific way that our district or ways our district could should work with other districts to support learning for all students?
Okay. I was just in a meeting last week at CASA. So CASA is in Oak Park. Oak Park is the fiduciary for CASA. It's a Center for Creative Studies, so to speak, and advanced classes. And seven districts converge on CASA, ourselves, Lamphier, Ferndale, Pontiac, Oak Park, to name a few. And that's where our students go. About 20% of our juniors and seniors go there every day for AP classes, more outside-the-box electives, like our kids love Detroit Film Study, our kids love, there's a yoga class, they love that. But that's where our... A lot of our driven students go to for college preparatory reasons. So we collaborate extensively around the seven districts. We recently collaborated on hiring a new director. We meet multiple times a year, these seven districts and superintendents and finance people around student offerings and opportunities. So why this resonates is last week, we just talked about, for the first time, we're excited about offering our students dual enrollment through Lawrence Tech. And it's the first opportunity from a four-year university perspective that I've been a part of, and computer science and cybersecurity are the options, and the hope is to certainly grow it. And, you know, our students who want to go that route of computer science or engineering, it's just one more layer of opportunity for them in a small district where sometimes opportunity can be finite. So what I would want to do is, and I said that in that meeting, we need to talk about other districts to grow this Lawrence Tech program to see if they're interested, because there's plenty of young men and women in Bloomfield and Birmingham and Troy that want to be engineers and want to go the route of computer science. So, you know, I think it's opportunities like that with like districts where we can... You know, that's a big one for me, that four-year university dual enrollment option. In the county, we have OCC as an option, every district does, and it's a phenomenal option for our kids. But we've never advanced it to that four-year opportunity, and I think partnering with like districts here, I already mentioned a few, and having the relationships that I do with the likes of Mbika and Rich and Troy, and we're together a lot, and I've built those relationships over time that we trust each other, and I think that they would be willing to sit down and collaborate around topics like that related to offerings at the four-year level dual enrollment for our kids. Because let's face it, that cost is not going down. So any opportunity for us to offer, you know, additional resources to our kiddos before they leave our campuses, I think would be fantastic, and collaborating with other districts is a way to do it.
Thank you. What impact has the use of standardized testing results had on our education system in Michigan?
Yeah, this is... This is every day. You know, the... Wow. A lot to speak to here. So let's... I'll personalize it again. I'll keep the dad hat on for just one more small. My son came out of COVID kindergarten. He was virtual, got to first grade, was a little behind in reading. Because of the phenomenal resources that they have and we have at his school, he's, you know, back on where he's supposed to be. My point is that I wouldn't know necessarily where he is related to his growth without this test called a diagnostic called iReady. We use it in our district, Birmingham uses it. It's just a diagnostic tool. It's a local standardized test that gauges where kids are.
Our reconvening, our interview of Mr. Schellenberger, and we just had yet another power interruption. So thank you for being flexible as we continue. So, thank you for being flexible as we continue to go through this, and thank you for our staff who is working very hard to fix this for us. When the power went out, we did pause the timer. Before resuming the timer, I will have Trustee South or repeat the last question so that those who are just now on the live stream can be up to speed on what it is that you're answering. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so the question reads, what impact has a use of standardized testing results had on our education system in Michigan?
It's a number of impacts. You know, I had, had started by talking about personal experience with standardized testing and being able to gauge where your, your kids are at. It's nice. You know, that's, that's been, that's been helpful as a parent, as I've watched my son grow as a reader. But the other side of the coin that we have a lot of experience with, obviously, is, is, you know, day-to-day standardized testing related to, and we just finished it. There's, I would say some, some concerns and some, some heavy lifts with it. You know, one of those is, it's likely here and not going away, so we'll, we'll continue to get after it. But, you know, one concern is the gaps that it creates. You know, in districts where there are students who, you know, low socioeconomic and they're in, they're in that space, you know, who are college-bound, for example, it's difficult for them to pay for tutors, pay for a Princeton Review course or versus more affluent districts. That's what happens a lot, you know. No, no, no fault of a student, you know, spending thousands of dollars to be prepared for those tests. So, you have two college-bound students who, a gap is created. Now, the other piece that's tough for a district like mine in Clausen is, you know, people move to, to districts that they think do well. And certainly, that makes sense. We did that. You know, that was important to us. But we are judged at times by tests like these where our kids are smart. They know if the test means something to them. An SAT, for example, if I'm going to be an electrician, the SAT is essentially meaningless. If I'm going to Michigan State, it's important. You know, so do you kids take the test seriously when it's, when it doesn't have as much meaning in a district where three out of 10, maybe four out of 10 students go to college? And then those are, those are the aspects of the, that you're judged on. So, or graded or rated on. So, it makes it difficult. So, I think there are gaps that are created that are hard to, to fill, and, and separations are created that are hard to plug, and, and that's a concern. Now, in our district, from a teacher perspective, teacher evaluation, for example, was 40% data-based, 20% standardized testing state, and 20% local testing. We just ratified our contract in December, and now it's 20% instead of 40. We no longer are basing our teacher evaluations on a standardized test. That 20% is either iReady or an SLO, which is a student learning objective. So, we have set that over here, and we're, we are all in the, in the room at the time, we're very happy with that decision. So, again, it's here. I've been working with it for 13 years, and, and will continue to, to do what we need to do and support our kids the way we need to support them, because we put a lot of things in place to do that related to standardized testing. But it can be concerning. It creates some gaps that, that are hard to fill, as I mentioned.
Thank you. Trustee Coleman?
What is the most difficult decision you had to deal with in your educational career, and how was it resolved?
Okay. So, the, the role of, of a principal is, wow, is it a tough one? You know, the, the dynamics that they have to work through daily is, is intense. And I'll give you an example from when I was a principal. Being a student-centered guy, leader, relationship-driven, and some of the best relationships I have with kids stem from a situation where they made a mistake and they're in my office, right? And then we build a relationship from it. So, that's, that's the goal. We had a situation a few years ago as a principal, incredibly difficult decision where we had a young student, this called student, and had a tip that they had a knife in their bag. We searched the bag and the knife was there. In the state of Michigan, there's a law, if the blade on a knife is over three inches, it's automatic expulsion. We have no say. The MDE says they must leave your district for 180-plus days. So, here's a, a seventh-grade student who comes to us from Pontiac. Student and mom live in a shelter, and her background as a 13-year-old was so intense, I said to her in a meeting, I said to the student, excuse me, in a meeting, do you know what an ACE score is? And I was shocked to hear a 13-year-old say, I do. An ACE score is an adverse childhood experience, and that's an educational acronym about, it's a score based on your, you know, at-risk students have. And for example, mine's a one. My parents divorced when I was a young kid, and you get a one for that. Hers was a 10. Students is a 10. Again, I apologize for. So, point being, at 13 years old, her path was a difficult one and led her to the point where here she is in my office with this knife, and I knew exactly what was going to happen. And when I asked the student why, the student said, it's because I just don't know when I will need it. And you understood that. I, I, she had no ill intent. The student had no ill intent, and, but our hands were tied. So, we had to expel that student. Fast forward two years later, that student still at that space in Pontiac and applied for reinstatement, which is the first in my career after an expulsion. So, the director of this institution called me to talk through why this student was reformed and all that the student had done. So, I said, I'm going to come up and meet with you there in her, the student's environment with mom. Went there, listened, talked through change. The student continued through V-LAC, which is the Virtual Learning Program, homeschool through Oakland Schools, stayed on track and was fully up to date academically. And we formed a committee through the board, which we have to do per policy, and made a recommendation to the board to give the student a chance and reinstate the student. And incredibly proud to say that students in our high school now and thriving. And that student said to me, the last thing that student said was, Mr. Shell, you will never hear a peep from me for the duration of my career. And, and I believed her. I believed the student, excuse me, sorry. And, you know, I'm, again, proud to say, a year into it, that the student is, is doing really well. So, a, a decision that kept me up a few nights, because here's an highly at-risk student who has very little to nothing, and we're telling her she has to leave, and when, when maybe the only happy place and two meals a day come from our building. You know, but it, it, the good news is, is it's, it's resolved. You know, the back part of this question is, how was it resolved? And it was resolved by us taking a chance, and I think that chance is going to prove to be the right decision. But very, very difficult.
Next question. What are the key elements needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship between you and the board?
Well, I sit here speaking from experience, because my relationship with my board is fantastic. I'm blessed to have the board that we have. They are driving the same bus down the same road every day, and it's, and it's about kids. And we are, all eight of us are in lockstep. So, I know what this looks like, and, and I'm a part of, of, of why. I humbly say I'm a part of why, and that is, obviously, number one is, is a strong level of communication, which is, again, I'll go back to what I said earlier, it's balanced. When it needs to be urgent, it's urgent. And, and the last thing I want my board to be in the public and get blindsided by some information that they should have received from me. So, that's important. You know, things that aren't urgent, you know, we, we communicate regularly through email, and then every single week I update, I do a weekly update. It's a rolling Google Doc. I think it's about 40 pages now, because every Sunday they get it from me, and it's just what my week looked like and what was going on in our district. So, that level of communication is imperative. The other piece is, I meet with my board president once a month and periodically individually with, for coffee, et cetera, for, with the other board members. And some of them work in our community. For example, I have a board member who's a crossing guard, and every week I go to Kenwood. I walk there, because our, our district is small and it's very walkable, and stop and connect with her at the, at her, at her space and, and head into the building. So, opportunities like that to build relationships, just like I will do with kids and staff, it's no different with, with the board. I mean, it's, the time we'll spend together is, is important, and building the relationships the way I have through those, again, significant interactions and, and listening to them and understanding their wants, needs, et cetera. It's no different than what we'll do with, what I'll do with community members in building relationships, and what I'll do with our staff, and certainly what I'll do with our students. Our board is as important as, as anyone. And, and again, I, I'm very proud to say that the work we've done together, us eight in, in Clausen, has been great work, and we get along, you know, swimmingly, and it's, it's fantastic to, to be a part of an entity that is moving in the same direction related to vision and, and mission like, like ours is. So, that's, that's a bulk of what I would do to, to build those relationships with, with you all.
How would you inspire and engage the entire school community to, in support of the district's vision and mission?
So, if you, that, that portfolio that I gave you on the cover page of the 90-day plan, I put your, your vision and mission. And what, what popped out to me in there, in both the vision and the mission, it talks about equity and inclusion. It's very important to me, very passionate about it. We do a lot of that work in our district, and I'll, I'll touch on that here shortly. But that's the example I'm going to use. So, let's, let's, let's use that example of, of that being important to our district, which it clearly is, your district, and, and important to me. And it's my job to drive that. Again, you don't drive that from, from your office. You drive that through modeling. And what does that mean? I'll go back to the example I used today. I sat in the room with 15 middle schoolers. We call that a student, student advisory council. I do that in all four of our buildings, have one in each building, about 15, and every month we meet. And the goal of that time is to listen to our students, and, and all of our students in the room are, come from different paths. And I learned long ago that there's value in everyone's path, mine included. And kids in that room are from Clausen, kids in that room are from Pontiac, kids in that room are from Southfield, kids in that room are from Madison Heights. And today, you know what we talked about? We talked about cafeteria food. That's what we talked about for 35 minutes, and I listened to their thoughts on it and how they felt about it. And then they give me feedback, and I share that feedback as needed. So, you know, for me, that inclusive piece with, with kids like that is important, and I'm going to model that. That's going to happen in, in BHS with, with me as the superintendent. I'm going to be in their buildings with them. I'm going to be in their cafeteria with them. I'm going to be in the classrooms with them daily, because that's important to me, and that's how I lead. So, I'm going to inspire through, through modeling, doing everything that I can related to, I, I, I'm not going to ask somebody to do something that I'm not willing to do. So, if I'm walking through the hallway of South Middle School and there's garbage on the floor, I'm going to pick it up in hopes that people see that and do what the superintendent does, because again, that's how you try to inspire and engage people, through modeling, being a servant leader, you know? And that's what servant, servant leadership is. And I learned long ago, it's, it's doing those things and not necessarily needing anybody to see it, but knowing that it makes an impact and not needing affirmations as a result of it. And that's, that's modeling the great work that we have to do, and hopefully that inspires, hopefully that inspires.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Schellenberger, my next three questions are around instruction and curriculum. What experiences and successes have you had with closing the achievement gap for economically disadvantaged and minority students?
We, you know, we, we have that today, and obviously in, in Clausen. We're at about 40 on paper percent free and reduced lunch. We have one title, Title I school at 40% is probably 50, but it's 40 on paper. So, we live this every single day. So, three things come to mind. I'll, I'll, I'll leave the success story for the end, but two, two interventions that we put in place to, to try to erase some gaps for, for our students who, who are at risk or disadvantaged. And, you know, one of those, one of those pieces is, and I, and I stole this from a different district who's doing it so, so well, and I just thought it was a spectacular idea. Right out of the gate as a superintendent last year in October, we had some grant funding that was, you know, we were fortunate to have and we needed to use. And I implemented academic Saturday school. So, academic Saturday school was, you know, one of my babies, you know, to start my superintendency. And what that was is, is truly an opportunity for, for our students to be in the same space on a Saturday with our teachers, specifically math and ELA, and with our honor students for two hours. And here's me opening up the door, bringing the donuts and welcoming our families, and at times we would get up to 50 kids, and it was, you know, really, really successful and impactful. Do I know that it closed a gap? I'm not sure. I guess time, you know, will, will likely tell, because we're continuing it, and we have, we've enhanced it this year and continue to use some of that. We're fortunate to have those, those grant monies, and we hired a director. One of our teachers is, is running it. So, each, we have a special ed, two special ed teachers, elementary and special, and high school, who are directing it, and it continues to be successful. And, you know, that's an opportunity for our, a lot of our parents who, we have students who don't get picked up from school until five and six o'clock at times, because parents have shift work and single parents, et cetera. So, this is an opportunity when they're not working to, to be a part of, you know, be invested in our, in our school community and us, and we, we invest back. So, very successful program that I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of. The second piece was, we got really targeted with our summer school. Again, we've been blessed with, with grant funding since COVID, and it's still there. The blessing is that it's there, and, and the curse is that it goes away and you can't count on it. But we are using it, using it, and, and summer school was a big, big part of that, very targeted with our students who needed, needed some work related to interventions, academic interventions and, and closing that, that gap. So, you know, we, we've done that the last two summers, again, for free because of that grant funding, which is, which is a big, big piece of it related to our disadvantaged students. And again, wildly, wildly successful. It's, you know, it's essentially, the rooms are full, our teachers love it, and it's been a great program for us. Last, last piece of this is the success story. So, in the fall, I'm in a room at Oakland Schools with 28 superintendents, 27 and myself, and Stephen Snead, who's the director of data and assessment at Oakland Schools, is going over all of the test scores from Oakland County. And I already knew this, this good news, and he put a slide up there with a plethora of bar graph, some going north and some going south. And obviously, you want to be on the, on the side going, going north. And I knew that we're, right where we were, and I knew that we were the far-right bar graph. And in Clausen, we don't usually land there. We, we fly under the radar to a certain extent, and we're, we're about on par with, with our county, but this time was different, and we had been told by Stephen that we were that, that had the most growth, ELA growth, third graders from 2022 to 2023 in the county. And that was, it was such a proud day, because there were superintendents in the room asking, how do they do that? Can you talk about what you've seen related to what they're doing to, to get, to get there? And he said buy-in. He said from the, his exact quote was superintendent on down, buy-in. I see it. They're invested. And I could not have been more proud, and I just sat back and really enjoyed that moment, because our team, led by our curriculum directors and our incredible elementary teachers who are just game changers daily, and I see it, because I'm in there, deserve all that credit. So, there's this success happening, because we implemented curriculum directors for the first time in our school's history two years ago. We were the curriculum directors as principals. So, now with those positions filled, they're so invested in it, and they're chipping away at our curriculum and, and, and our programs. And the, the first one was implementing CKLA at the elementary level, and the fruits of that were seen in that, in that room that day, and what a proud day. So, there are some successes that, that we have had. There are still some that we're, we're waiting to see if they're working, but we're doing everything we can to, to bridge those gaps for sure.
Thank you. Next question. What's the biggest risk you've taken to do what's right for students?
I'm going to go back to our bond. In 2021, we passed a, our, our residents passed a $55 million zero-mill bond, and we started the project. We're three and a half years into a five-year project right now. Two years ago, it was brought to our attention in the summer that we had an issue, and that issue was the dreaded inflation word. Things were up to the tune of 15% labor, materials, and we were now in need of, our $55 million needed to be 62 million. So, the conversation was, I'll never forget it, with our construction firm was, either we need to shave scope off of this project, or we need to raise more money. So, we went back to PFM to find out what the options were, and shockingly, the options were up to, up to 25 million more and at zero mills. So, we, here, off I went, formed our committee, again, municipal leaders, parents, teachers, students, and we started to talk about it. What do we want to do? Everything from nothing to 25 million and everything in between? Do we just want to do 7 million? What do we want to do here? We just came off a bond that We just came off a bond that passed at about 70%. Do we want to do this again? Long story short, unanimously, at 96% probably of the group said, not only let's do it again, but let's, let's go for for all of it, $25 million, because this is our only only shot. This is probably a once in a career opportunity for all of us and our kids need it because we have a 100-year-old building from a middle school perspective and and the stories around our old facilities and operations, the list goes on and on and on. So we undertook that, that task. We started the campaign process. I spent the summer knocking on doors. I got caught in a rainstorm about a mile from my car with no umbrella, doing this, having conversations with people, just being in it and telling our story. And the story was kids and they deserve it. And because in Claussen, we're small, we don't often get the brand-new desks and the the brand-new LVT in every room and a brand-new gym that's expanded. So this was our chance. This was our chance. And we worked through it with an active say no campaign happening while we were in it. And it passed at about 60% and what a thrill. So not only did we bridge that gap of that 7 million, but here we are. We go back to the table with that team and talk about, okay, what do we do with this other $18 million? Now we can really do some fantastic things and touch every space in our district for the sake of our kids. So you want to talk about a risk? If that doesn't pass, we go back to the table and shave $7 million in scope to a project that we promised our residents we were going to do. Now that's, talk about a tail between your legs moment that I didn't want to, you know, have to undertake, but that was the risk we took and it was 100% driven by by our students and giving them this opportunity that they'll never see again and I certainly won't in my career. So very proud of our residents twice in two years and 24 months, again, with an active no say no campaign. And they really upheld it and did that work for us. And like I said, we have about a year and a half left in this project and it's going fantastic. And when it's all said and done, it's going to be an example of of great facilities and some really strong decisions by our district that have been made and executed.
Thank you. Last question for me is on special ed. Would you believe are the biggest challenges with special education in our region? And how should these challenges be addressed?
In October, I was asked by our now soon-to-be Oakland Schools Superintendent Ken Gottman, he was the deputy superintendent at the time, he asked me to write a white paper on IDEA or special ed funding and the concerns around it. That he, that was backed, being backed by Congresswoman Haley Stevens, and they were hoping to get it to the White House is what Ken said to me. And he wanted the small school perspective. So funding, I'll start with funding. Special ed is just very simply not funded appropriately. That's the challenge. That's that's challenge number one. So in order for us to to fund it appropriately in our district, we have to draw from our general fund often, and that takes away other opportunities for for our district and students, no fault of special ed. So I wrote that paper, very proud to write it, you know, because we have a story. We have a story in our district. We're 1,200 students in our district. And, you know, you can understand that there are challenges with with being a small district. When you, when you lose 10 students, it's different losing 10 students financially in Claussen than it is in Birmingham. No disrespect to Birmingham, not their fault, but my point is that the the impact is great and we continue to lose them, as do many. So the lack of funding doesn't help. Now, how do we, how do we address that? Right now, we're addressing it through grants and and that's, that's the amazing news. But as I said, the detriment to a grant is that it, you can't count on it because it eventually goes away. But for the last three years and and what looks like a little bit more, specifically around ancillary staff in special ed, we've been able to fund staff and be fully staffed with social workers and school psychs, et cetera. And that funding is also paying for our therapy dogs, our four therapy dogs, which are expensive, as you can appreciate. So, you know, that that aspect of what we're doing is working right now, that long term. We need a better solution and we need help, but right now, from a funding perspective, we're utilizing some some great grant opportunities to to plug that, that fill that gap. So the second concern that that I have is around staffing. You know, the climate around staffing and teaching right now is is different than it was 10 years ago. 10 years ago, you left a district and you you ultimately took a pay cut because you didn't get credit for years, but now that's completely different. And special ed is truly the wild, wild west of 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 teaching right now and and good for them. Opportunity is is robust. Many of them who were not getting compensated to where they should be are now, which is fantastic and I'm extremely happy for them. So we have to stay competitive around staffing. I'm proud to say that in my six years, we've never started a school year without a a filled special ed, with any gaps related to special ed positions, which is fantastic. And I attribute that to our climate and culture that we work on extensively. That goes back to the theme of of tonight a little bit. We work hard at that. And we've had teachers leave, go to other districts for different reasons, which we respect and have come back because our grass is pretty green and we're proud to say that it is. And and it's a great place to teach and it's a great place to learn. We're now a little bit more competitive because, as I said, we ratified that contract. We were one of the first districts to do that in in December. And we've become even more competitive related to that space. So we have to, you have to stay in the game related to staffing right now because it's a different, it's a, it's a different arena than it was five or 10 years ago. So funding and and staffing certainly will, you know, remain concerns certainly for years to come, I believe.
Over to your trusty fellow.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate your time. I've got a couple of questions on finances. The first one is, how would you ensure that our district's spending is aligned with our priorities?
Yeah, that's, that starts with team. That's collaboration. So what we can't have and we don't in Claussen because we we can't afford to, because everybody wears a lot of different hats related to the different jobs, finance, HR, et cetera, my position, ensuring that there's collaboration with those different entities, your your business office and us and your, you know, and and goals and priorities, those have to align. So they have to marry one another. And and the perfect example is 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 what I just talked about, our our teacher contract. So it, without a shadow of a doubt, we needed to go to the table in the fall for that contract and being one of the first to bargain, you know, some, some aspects of a contract that haven't been bargained in 12 years. You know, it was, it was, it was nerve-wracking and and financially, we had to, we had to show up as a district. We did. And in a district where we fluctuate with our fund balance, 7% this year, 14 next year, and it it go, it's all over the place because of our our enrollment. And we work hard at staying solvent. We work hard at our budget, with our budget. We work hard at being fiscally responsible, myself and our assistant superintendent of finance, she's part-time, she's retired and part-time, but does the work of a of a full-timer in two days. It's amazing. So I have my fingerprint on that as well because I have to in a in a small district. So understanding from from that perspective, where we're at budget-wise and financially versus what our priorities are and marrying the two together. So you're collaborating with one another and nobody's making those decisions or having those conversations in a, on an island. We're together in doing that. And the good news about how I lead is, from a team perspective, that's quite honestly all I know and what I thrive on. So we're going to do it together. We're going to do it in a collaborative manner, in a collegial manner, and and that's how we move in the same direction together by being communicative and transparent with one another. That's the only way to do it.
Next question is, what opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? And in tough financial times, what are your top three priorities?
They present a lot of limitations, you know, but the one thing that we have to do and and we work hard at doing it is keeping everything on the table. Let's start with programming for our students. We can't eliminate anything. We have to work as hard as we can to to make sure that everything remains there. And we're talking about performing arts, athletics. Our kids go to CASA, our kids go to OTEC, our kids go to IA, our kids do enroll. And we're able to maintain that through some, we have tough budget times, you know, it depends on the year, quite honestly. And last school year, we lost 70 students and we were, we budgeted to lose 50. So, you know, this, this is, this is something that we are familiar with, but it's important that programming is maintained. You do that through through making some tough decisions around, we're doing it right now, rightsizing our district. Operationally, we're going to be in such a a a great place from a building perspective and infrastructure, no disrespect to the infrastructure here. I'm kidding. Too soon about the power outage. So kidding, so we're we're fortunate to have all of that work done with the bond and and that allows us to maintain things like our programming. The other piece too, that that is is certainly, especially with what we have gone through as a district, is safety. That can just never go away. And of this $80 million, so much of it is being spent on on safety, whether it's secure vestibules or, you know, or window coverings and, you know, initiatives around, we don't have SROs in our in our district, so we have to ensure that we're being very responsible with these these bond dollars around around safety. But there can, fortunately, we have this bond to do that because our budget limitations might prevent us from doing some of those things. And that's a tough conversation to have. What if something happened and we said, well, we couldn't afford a secure vestibule, so we had a, an issue in our school with with an act of violence? That's not the answer that a parent needs nor wants to hear. And I'm not the person that wants to give it to them. So because that's my job to keep their child safe every single day and that's a high priority. And that will, that will continue. We've been able to do that in tough financial times. I think, and this is the last few questions, I've talked, touched on it, compensation. Again, in the the public ed climate right now related to teaching and the the massive shortage that we have, which is not going away, we have to remain competitive. You have to do two things. You have to build culture where people want to stay and people want to be. So you have to recruit and retain and you do that through appreciating people and gratitude and kindness and balance. Those are important in building relationships and making sure that they know that they are appreciated. That's culture and that keeps people and and retains people, but people also have to pay the bills. And we respect that. So, again, we had to get competitive this this winter and we did. So compensation is 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 important regardless of your, you know, those limitations. But preparing for that, preparing for that ahead of time, well in advance, is is crucial. So those would be the three things that I think would be priorities.
Thank you. Last question for me is, please describe your experiences with millage renewals, bond proposals and sinking fund proposals.
Well, I'll apologize for being redundant with with the bond, but, you know, it's a big part of the work that we are doing and I know that you you all have been doing it and are doing as well. Sinking fund, we don't have one. We know that we need one and, you know, that would be a plan and we've talked about it, but we want to let our voters rest for a little while, right? That that's a, that's a, that's a down-the-road decision, you know, I think maybe four or five years for for Claussen, but we have to wait and see what this Oakland County enhancement millage brings. If it's on the ballot and it somehow passes, that would serve as a sinking fund option for us related to to being able to push that down the road a little bit. So so no experience there, but extensive with the bond. In 2021, I was a principal and again, in a small district where you wear a lot of hats and myself and the superintendent led the charge on a 50-person bond committee that went for six months. And the decisions we were making about picking out a color of flooring in an elementary room and this, it's in the color of a brick because it doesn't match the brick from 100 years ago and you're, you know, it's, you know, very, very detailed decisions and, but important for our community. It was fun, but it was a heavy lift. And so in 2021, that was, that that got us that 55 million and then and then back to 2023 where I mentioned that I led the charge on on that campaign all summer. And that was a lot of fun, great people, a lot of the same people and people who are invested in our community, including myself, and we, we, we got it done. So very proud of the bond work that we have done. One piece that is, I think, is important to to note is the level of hands-on that I am, not from a micromanagement perspective, but every single Wednesday, we have an OAC meeting, which is Owner Architect and Construction Meeting. It's the meeting where we talk about everything. And about six months ago, our architect said to me, and I took this as a compliment, quite honestly, he said, I've never seen a superintendent in every OAC meeting. And I said, well, Brian, you've never been to a community like Claussen where it's this important and and like I said, we, everyone wears a lot of different hats. So that time is carved out for an hour and a half every week and it's it's vital that I am there, our our facilities director and our assistant super finance are there to make decisions in real time and and move it along. And I'm proud to say that three and a half years into this thing, it's on time and on budget, which is rare. But we have a phenomenal team and we're blessed to have them. So very hands-on with our bond proposals, as I would be here, again, in a in a very balanced way where it's it's non-threatening to to those in the room, but it's, it's proved to be very beneficial so far for us.
Secretary Noble?
Thank you for being here today and for answering so far.
Thank you.
How would you interact, I'm going to ask some questions about staff and personnel, just to give you the topic. How would you interact with our administrators in our district and how would you strike a balance between giving them the support and autonomy they need to lead effectively while holding them accountable as appropriate and necessary?
Okay. I may have to ask you to repeat that at some point because it's not up there. Oh, there it is. There it is. Got it. So scratch that. Thank you. It starts again with with relationships. I'll go back to it, you know, that theme that's important to me, but this is where trust comes in. So I've sat in a seat for almost a decade, assistant principal, principal, middle school, high school, I get it. I understand their job. It's not easy, quite the contrary. And the moving parts and pieces that come with it are are hard to believe at times. So it starts by me building relationships with them where they trust in what I'm doing and what I'm saying. And I'll go back to modeling, you know? It's, it's their building, but we have to take pride in those buildings and and I want to build relationships with them where they trust my guidance and in a way that I'm a resource, I'm a teammate. They'll never, ever hear me say the word boss. It just doesn't, it's not in my vocabulary because that just doesn't work. We lead together. I I seek to understand first, which is crucial. When I was a principal, nothing worse than, for example, you get a parent email who's upset. And you never know what's true and what's not sometimes. And, you know, you want to, you you want people to seek to understand your side of it first as a, as the building administrator, to understand where things are. And I think that's important. So doing that will build trust. But again, I'm going to, I'm going to be with them. This isn't going to be over email. This isn't going to be over Zoom. I'm going to be in their buildings, I'm going to be in their cafeteria with them and at their events with them and shoulder to shoulder with them, arm and arm, being a support, being a resource. So they get to the point where we know each other, we trust each other and they believe in the bus that I'm driving and and they want to be on it, you know, related to building a culture that keeps great staff and recruits great staff, keeps families and 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 brings more families in. In a space like Bloomfield Hills where there are so many options where students can go, you know, that's imperative, building that culture with them, arm and arm, so we we can do that. So we can keep the great people that are here and and bring bring more. So but you have to balance it. I'll go back to that balance word again so they don't feel micromanaged. It's their space, you have to respect it, but a resource, a support, a teammate. Attacking it from that angle will build that trust. And when you have to have those conversations around accountability, which can be tough, they don't have to be negative. They don't have to be difficult. They can be, at that point in time, if you're doing it the right way, they are, they're, they're guided in positive aspects of, let's do it together. I've I've lived it with you, I understand. So this is what I have learned over the course of my career and let's try it together. So there's ways to do that and balance it to ensure that they feel supported, relationships are being built, all the while they have autonomy and trust from from me.
Thank you. The next question is, could you please describe your most successful experience in building a high-performing work team?
High-performing work team. This one, the first thing that comes to mind for me is is about students, is actually. So my first year as principal of Claussen High School, it was clear that I was looking for areas that we could grow, gaps, so to speak, where there was need. And I found two in that first year that were important, our students with disabilities and our high-performing kind of team captain type of students. So I love it. So the the, we started a Trojan Leadership Council. Trojan Leadership Council, TLC for short, is centered around our students, student leaders. I'll give you an example. I was a boys varsity basketball coach for years, kind of cut from that cloth. My dad was a coach. And you made a team captain. Coach says, You're a captain. Be better. Be the leader. Be a coach on the floor for us. Coach your lead your lead your teammates. Ready, go. And off they go. Coaches don't have the time and the resources to add tools to their toolbox and how to be a better leader. We just have this expectation. And having that experience, I'm like, we need to give it to them. So Trojan Leadership was it. So we brought 30 kids that first year into the into the room and introduced them to what that was going to be about and the expectation. And it was about building culture in our building because people follow them. They're culture builders. What they do, other kids do. And fast forward to six years later, under the under the umbrella of servant leadership, because that's all we talked about, and we centered around this book called Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek, the first summer that we were a part there, we had them read that. And talking about pushing others in front and leading from from the back. And how we did that was we brought Unified Sports to our school that first year in 2018. If you're not familiar with Unified Sports, it's Special Olympics sponsors it, and it is semi-competitive sports for our kids. And we had a basketball team that first year. And we, I watched our Trojan Leadership Council kids. We married them together, be the peer links in there. They led the student section in a in packed gyms. We're the first school in Oakland County to have a unified basketball team. Our gyms were sellouts. It was free, but essentially standing room only. And I watched parents and myself and our staff shed tears over students missing baskets, air balling shots, because this is the first time that they have ever had a tie-in to our building. And people are cheering for them and announcing them on the PA. And here's our Trojan Leadership Council kids, the best of the best, on the floor with them, leading the student section, on the bench with them, guiding them into the game, and making sure their jersey's on. And what a team. So the most successful high performing work team I've ever been a part of was that combination of those two. And it bridged a significant gap in our building and changed our culture. Now, COVID took our knees out from underneath us, but we're back, and Unified Sports is is strong again. And so was Trojan Leadership Council. And I feel like an old man because they had me come back last month and be their speaker. And our assistant principal introduced me as the founder of Trojan Leadership Council, and I felt so old. But I was honored to do it because here it is, these kids in front of me, doing what we wanted them to do and serving others. And wow, what a powerful team inside of a building, just leading every day and building culture for you. So that's, that's, that's a great one.
All right. How would staff members in your district describe you?
Well, I would say in your in that those documents I gave you, there's some, you know, it's hard to ask people to write letters of recommendation, right? It's, you know, it can be, it's, it's, that's a tough one, because here you are asking them, tell me why you like me, right? It's, it's, but you do it. And wow, what an eye opener, and how humbling. And those are the ones that are in your, some of them that are in your portfolio are from building level staff, one of our school psychologists and assistant principal, who's also a parent. And the things that they say about how I lead are so important to me, and I appreciate them. Things like resilient and courageous, you know, I lead from that from that lens. I'm a, I'm a present man. I'm a visible man, and I can't not be. I can't do this job without that. I have to be with kids, with people, building relationships. That's, that's huge. And I learned a work ethic from my dad, you know, he's a retired high school principal and the hardest working man I've ever seen. And, you know, I take that from him. And I get after it with with our staff, arm and arm, boots on the ground. I mean, I'm, I'm with them. I'm with them, not far from them. I'm in their classrooms. I'm in their space together. And now it's to the point where I walk into a second grade classroom, and it's very, very comfortable. I walked into a kindergarten classroom this morning, and the sweetest young lady named Ezra, good morning, Mr. Shell, six years old. And I didn't have that as a principal. Now, as a superintendent, I'm able to broaden that leadership perspective and and be in kindergarten classrooms and see the great work that's being done. So present, visible, work ethic is is a pillar of what I do. But a great listener, too. I've honed that skill. That was tough. When I was, my first year as an assistant principal, listening was not a strength. And I found that to be difficult to get through some tough, to be equitable and inclusive with our students, not being that great listener. And I'm really happy to say that I've learned over time that that's imperative, and I've really honed that skill. So I'll stop there, you know, because it's, it's, there's, there's some things that were said, and I would invite you to read that, that are, again, very, very humbling, and I'm very proud of that work that we do together. But I say that, I say that, and it means something, together in our district. And that's why I think that culture is so strong, because I'm nobody's boss, and we're all teammates. And that is true. And that uplifts and empowers what we do. And I think that that's, those are some of the things that people would say, staff members would say about me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your responses to the questions we have prepared for this first round interview. We would like to take a few minutes now to provide you with an opportunity to ask any questions you might have for the board.
Well, I took it, oh, go ahead.
It's under 20.
It's 20 minutes.
You've got the timer up for you to let you know how much time you have left.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it. I took the opportunity to spend some time, Mr. Kumar, Ms. Hill, at for like a 15-minute informal session, which I appreciate, answered some questions that I may have had today. So that was fantastic. I appreciate you offering that. Two very, you know, what I deem important questions, and it goes back to culture building and and what what we do as as leaders in the public ed space. I'm curious your thoughts on, very simple, points of pride that that you have in this district. Why are you proud to serve it? You know, what's what's happening in your, and I would assume, as many of you are parents in the district, that that those different points of pride might be might be different. So I'm curious about that. And then I'll ask the second one concurrently. It's, you know, what are some some edges, some growth spots that you're looking for some change in? You know, you're looking for somebody to lead through. So points of pride and maybe some some edges to polish that a superintendent can help with.
Points of pride.
Well, I personally have very young children, a three and a five-year-old. So I know the preschools very well in our district, and I know it's not K through 12. But I am very proud of our preschool teachers, and I think it's really important to give them the credit where the credits do, because we have one of the top programs, in my opinion, in the county. But also, the opportunities that we provide, we provide such a diverse range of opportunities for students to get involved with extracurriculars or co-curriculars. And if a student's interested in it, we can provide it. But we also have students that are very active and so prepared to go on to amazing things that we have some of the best and brightest here in Bloomfield Hills, in my opinion.
Sure. Thank you.
But, oh, wait, I wanted to say one other thing, though. What I'm looking for, some change is for under-resourced students, I'm looking for some some focus on helping those students gain some momentum and some opportunity to get them to where they they would like to achieve, you know, to bring them to their level of achievement. And that's some of the areas that I would like improvement in the future and long-term progress progression in.
I think it's the active and engaged parents that we have in the community. I have a student at each of each level, elementary and middle school and high school. And throughout our time here, whether it be in school activities or recreational activities, there's volunteers everywhere. There's, I think it takes support from home in order to get those test scores that we talk about. I don't think those come, I mean, we have great teachers, but I think it takes that marriage of the family and and the school to to really help students achieve. And I think that we have that here. I'll take a minute to think about, you know, the second part of that question, and if anyone else wants to chime in.
Just want to echo, I think we have some amazing teachers in our district, to your point about recruiting talent. We have extreme talent within our within our organization. I would say we have strong PTO organizations as well, very, very much so in tune and involved with what's needed at the school level, each individual school level. I think our community is strong. The support between our bond and our sinking fund shows that we have a very strong supportive community voice that's here. Points of growth for me are always connected back to the classroom and education. And so I would say, looking at ways in which we can better support our children who are at both ends, I would say, those students who are high achieving, right, and so are in the classroom, who need additional distractions beyond just the bird flying past, right? So what other things we can do for those students who are at the top level? And then also our students who are falling a little bit below level, how can we also make sure we're addressing their needs? And then also looking at some of our areas where students are, either students of color, low socioeconomic status, our students who are on IEP, making sure those students also are making progression each year. We're no longer in COVID, so we can't use that as an excuse. So how do we continue to move that needle education-wise? Those are points of growth for me. And yeah, I think we have amazing administrators in our district as well. Love, love, love Rebecca. So I want to do a shout out for Rebecca right now, too. So can't do anything else without Rebecca. I think everybody needs to know Rebecca's name, so.
So so my my comments, two comments, getting back to both the questions. First, in terms of point of pride, is between our, all the staff in our district and all our community members, if you show them you care about them and their students, they will reciprocate. And I can come from personal experience on that. So that's a great thing about our community. To answer your second question, we need a leader who's going to make a decision and stick by it, but make a decision. So I think that's important for me.
Anyone else want to comment on that? There's 12 minutes left.
So we have, as as trustee Southward and trustee Noel mentioned, we have, you know, great teaching staff, very accomplished, engaged. We've got a very engaged community, high expectations. We've got, as you can see, a very strong mission and vision statement. We need to bring all of that together, right? We need to corral those expectations and that energy out there between our community members, our staff, our administration, and the board, to put together a strategic plan which takes us to the next level of education in the state.
Anyone else? Do you have any other questions of the board?
No.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, we have time remaining. I think it should be around 10 minutes or so. Is there anything else that you want to add to conclude?
Sure. If I could close, I'm going to mirror a little bit what I opened with around the why. And, excuse me, as I've said multiple times tonight, I'm fortunate to lead where I lead in the community where where I lead. It's, it's a fantastic place, great place for kids. Our families are supportive, mirrors many of the things that you just said, points of pride. There's so much, a great board, a great staff. It's fun every day to go to work there. And it would take a lot to 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 move me away from from that place, because I love it so much and I'm so invested. And this is that opportunity. And I didn't necessarily know that I would, I would feel it in my, in my, in my gut that that it was the right time, and it certainly is. And the opportunity to come here and and get in, get myself much more embedded in this community as a as a resident, this community is very important to me. My neighborhood is very important to me. The relationships I have in your district with educators are very important to me. And I would love to be a part of leading in the community that I have so much pride in. I've never done that before, and it's in its time. You know, certainly in a place that mirrors, you know, a couple of the districts I have been in, related to performance and, you know, so my diverse background related to public ed lends very well to this, and in terms of timing and how much I have left, which is a long time in public ed. And, you know, I look forward to an opportunity to balance my life, you know, with being more present in my district because of proximity, and certainly with with my family. That's important to me as well, to be a present dad and husband. So but knowing the the priority that being visible and present in a district is, this lends itself perfectly to that. So the opportunities in Bloomfield are robust, obviously, and resources, and I would love to be a part of that. But again, my background, which coming from three different districts and, you know, essentially, the full spectrum of students and profiles and paths that I talked about earlier that that we value, I feel really confident in in this timing for for me and my family and Bloomfield Hills schools. So that's, that's it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Schellenberger, we appreciate your interest in the superintendent position for Bloomfield Hills Schools. We will be interviewing a total of four candidates this week. We completed two last night and then two tonight. The board will then convene a special meeting this Friday, April 19, at 5:30 PM, to determine the next steps for the finalist interviews. Following that meeting, Mr. Stein will contact you to let you know where you stand in our search process. Thank you for your participation in this first round interview.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And we will go into a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Our meeting, we are moving on to item 3B on the agenda, which is an interview of Mr. Rick West, the deputy deputy superintendent for Troy School District. Good evening. And on behalf of Bloomfield Hills Schools, I would like to welcome you to this interview for the position of superintendent. Rick West is the deputy superintendent of the Troy School District in Troy, Michigan. I will take a few moments to briefly describe our format. I see you have something that you'd like to pass out. When I'm done with this, I will ask you to do that. I will take a few minutes to briefly describe our format. We have allotted 90 minutes for the interview. We won't start that timer until we're done with all this introductions and formality. There will be 20 questions from the board. Toward the end of the interview, time permitting, we will give you the opportunity to ask questions of the board, make a closing statement. We will let you know if time is becoming an issue, and there's a need to pick up the pace of the responses. We're going to set the timer for 90 minutes, and when we get down to 20 minutes, we'll turn the clock around to show you to let you know that you're down to 20 minutes. For those watching this interview in the audience, we welcome your feedback. Feedback can be provided by completing the paper forms available in the room and turning them into Mr. Tim Stein of the Michigan Leadership Institute. Feedback with the Board of Education can also be shared by scanning the QR code or completing the electronic form, which can be found at bloomfield.org/feedback. Although the task of choosing our next superintendent is the responsibility of the Board of Education as the elected representatives of our community, we value and seriously consider the input of all of our stakeholders in the process. We, I will pause, or starting with the two questions, until you've had the opportunity to pass out your materials. All right. We will now begin our timer. I'm going to start with two opening questions, and then we're going to go around to each trustee, and they will each ask three questions. And then at the at the end, we will hopefully have time for an opportunity for you to ask questions of us. So the first opening question, Mr. West, the board has had the opportunity to review your application materials, but many audience members have not. Please briefly review your background and share what makes you interested in becoming the superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, President Hill and members of the Board of Education. It is truly an honor. I am humbled and honored to be here tonight to interview for what I believe genuinely to be the most coveted job in public education in the state of Michigan. Being the superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools would certainly be an honor of a lifetime, and I am excited to be here. A little bit about myself, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't start with that. I'm a loving I'm a loving husband to my wife Angela of 17 years almost and then a father of three lovely kids pre-adolescents. So we are, we are challenged by, by the opportunities that exist in parenting right now. So what's most relevant probably to, to you now is I am also an educational leader. I have devoted my entire adult career to educational leadership. As you can see by my resume, I have served in three different school districts of all different sizes. I began my career at Atherton Community Schools, where I spent three and a half years directly assisting the superintendent in the day-to-day operations of there as their business manager. I also, I'm not sure if I referenced it, but I also served a brief stint there as their interim superintendent, much like you going through a process here. You need a superintendent, so you appoint an interim. I was honored to serve in that capacity at Atherton. For growth opportunities, I accepted a job at Royal Oak Schools, where I served there for three and a half years as well, also serving on the superintendent's cabinet and directly assisting him in the day-to-day operations, specifically as the finance and operations executive director there. Then I have been blessed to serve the last nine and a half years at the Troy School District, serving in the roles of assistant superintendent of business services, as well as currently serving as their deputy superintendent. And excellent experiences throughout my entire career. I think it's important and it's, it's riddled throughout the plan that I've given you, my 90-day plan, and I think it's important to note four key takeaways from my career. I'll try to condense it into four really focused areas that I've taken away. And I could attribute to the four superintendents I've worked for or, or the three districts, but nevertheless, they are, students matter, okay? Students matter. I learned that in the very first day, and this is, this is a true story. Our first superintendent that hired me into public education, we had students in the room. He would ask the students, who's the most important person in this room? It'd be filled with board members, it'd be, it was filled with administrators. And he reminded them, and I've never forgot it, he pointed to him and said, no, you're the most important person in the room. I'll never forget that. And that is a focus area that, that I bring with me and a lens of which I work. Second is relationships matter. We have to build relationships. We cannot do these jobs alone. And I have been able to cultivate a number of wonderful relationships from the start of my career to now that I continue to treasure and they're long-lasting. We do these, this work together. The outcomes matter. People look to perception data, they look to real data, they, they, they look to the outcomes. Student achievement matters. It's how we're evaluated as a school district, right, wrong or indifferent. It's how, it's what people look at. It's why people buy houses in Bloomfield Hills Schools. Outcomes matter. It's why kids go on to college and career-ready because of, because of the outcomes. And the final thing is, and the reason why I'm really here, is leadership matters. And, and those are my four takeaways. I think I, I expect I'll have an opportunity to kind of talk more about those four, four areas and the, and that's really the lens of which I bring to, to the work. So why Bloomfield Hills? You know, one could, I guess luck is defined as when preparation meets opportunity. And so perhaps it's just luck, but I can tell you the preparation, I just talked about the three, three districts, the 16-plus years' career in directly assisting superintendents in the day-to-day activities, coupled with the job, the opportunity that presents itself here tonight is, is really why, why I'm here. I reviewed in great detail when it came out in February, I believe, late February, the candidate profile. I know the MLI process quite well. I've, I've studied superintendent's interviews, as weird as that sounds, for years, decades, knowing that I long to be one. And I studied this opportunity in, in particular. And as I looked at the candidate profile, and I don't need to reiterate it to you, and evaluated against my experiences and the preparation for the job, I thought they aligned quite nicely. And as I started with, I don't, I shouldn't have to tell any of you, this is a destination district. It's in your profile, it's in, it's in the, it's in the position announcement. It is a destination district. I'm at Troy, a high achieving, high achieving, high expectation district. And in a lot of ways, in my evaluation and my study and my research of the district, it mirrors what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish at Troy. So that's really why. And I already said students mattered, but, and it, it can sound cliche, quite frankly, but we, my leadership will bring a student-centered focus. We have to evaluate the, not only the student achievement, but the student experience. And that's a lens of which I'll bring. And I am honored again to be here interviewing for, for what I truly believe is the most coveted job this state has to offer right now.
Thank you. The second question is, given your understanding of the Bloomfield Hills School District, what is the most critical short-term priority we need to address? And what is the most critical long-term priority we need to address? How would your background and skills help us address these short and long-term priorities?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for the question being, being right there. It will save me some writing. I have, as I mentioned, as I'm sure, given the uptick in my profile views on LinkedIn, many people's been looking at who I am and what I am. I've been doing a lot of research of Bloomfield Hills School District, not only through the website, but I'm a relational person, so I've made, I've made contacts that, and people here have been gracious with their time of just answering my question. What do you like about Bloomfield? What, what are the opportunities that exist? And, and I would say, from a short-term standpoint, I really believe there's great opportunities. From what I know, again, it'll take an evaluation period and I outline how, how I'll evaluate and, and what I'll do in my first 90 days. But I believe there's an opportunity to bring some coherence to, to the school district, some, some leadership. I mean, it's not a secret that you've had two interim superintendents over the course of this year, you know, four, four, I think, over the course of the four years. So I, I believe there's some need for stability and there's some need for some coherence. There are pockets of excellence all over. It's in your points of pride, it's in the research, it's on the webpage. And bringing, bringing that together under a framework, a cohesive framework, where everybody is united and working in the same, toward the same goals, in the same direction, I think is important. And, and I put that, that's probably short-term and long-term, quite frankly, but I, I do believe there's, there's opportunities there to make quick work of it. We have great experience in Troy of doing this. It's, it's, it's a coherence framework from Michael Follin, you know, where you focus direction, you cultivate a collaborative culture, you deepen learning and then you hold people accountable to it. And I think we can study that a little bit and bring some of that, some of that here. And I, in my research, I, I glean that maybe that's an opportunity. The long-term, and when I say long-term, I, I say, you know, one to, one to five years. I want to be your superintendent for a long time. I'm, I'm not near-retirement eligible, I'm not desirable for, for that. I, I have a long career ahead of me and I am looking forward to leading for, for a long time. So when I talk about long-term, I would love to lead the process of a, of a long-term strategic planning. I've seen some, some of the stuff on the website of, of where you, you might be, but I think there's opportunity under new leadership, you know, in connection and collaboration with the, all stakeholders to really dive in and look at a, what a strategic plan would look like to really lead the district and drive the district for the years to come.
Thank you.
And my backgrounds, let me just answer briefly the, the, the second part of the question. I, I alluded to it, we have been doing this work for the last decade in Troy. I have had an opportunity, as I mentioned, when I'm talking about directly assisting superintendents in the day-to-day and strategic visioning of school districts, we have had an opportunity both at Atherton, Royal Oak and, and now at Troy to, to engage in this process. It's a powerful process. It's a process that brings people together and it's a process that allows, allows us to move forward together.
Thank you. We will start with trustee Van Gammert's questions.
Good evening. I'll have three questions that pertain to district relations. Maintaining healthy relationships with school, community stakeholders is important to the Board of Education. Please share with us how you have gone about building and maintaining successful relationships with all members of the school community.
Yeah, it is, it is important. Strong, strong schools equal strong communities and strong communities equal strong schools. I, I truly believe that. I think we are the backbone of, of a community. That's, again, why people move here. So cultivating those relationships, engaging with those stakeholders is going to be paramount to, to the new superintendent. I've laid it out in my plan. I would plan to engage with all stakeholders. I think in just a quick count, we were up to 30 and you'll see it in my presentation as well, we're up to 30-plus, plus organizations, PTOs, Kiwanis Rotary, interfaith councils, all of it. I will be visible, I will be accessible, I will be responsive to the needs of the community and I will engage with them. They'll know me, I'll know them. And I will be a staunch advocate for, for what we're doing. I'll be selling what we're doing, I'll be highlighting what we're doing. I will be celebrating successes all along the way, be telling our story. When we don't tell our story, others will. And, and we want to, we want to control that message, we want it to be positive. And engaging with stakeholders, building those relationships are, are critically important. Throughout my career, I have had the unique opportunities to, to do that. I have, I currently serve as deputy superintendent, I serve as the liaison to our PTO presidents' council. It's the presidents of the 21 school buildings. I am their liaison, I, I attend their quarterly meetings. I'm visible, I, you know, as I can be at, in my current role at extracurricular, co-curricular events, and I think that's important. As a superintendent, I think that should be an expectation and that's certainly something that I would look to prioritize.
Thank you. What are some examples of community activities in which you have provided leadership and in what ways did that benefit your district?
Yeah, the, the main why, and I have to, I have to talk about it and gloat about it because it's been just an awesome, awesome experience. The, we just passed in 20, November of 2022, we passed a $555 million bond. And I was involved, I've shared this experience with, with others. That really started with a financial strategy that began back in 2016, when my boss and I and, and some board members were engaged in, when is our opportunity and, and how much? And, and we knew it was, we knew '22 was going to be, was going to be the year where we could, we could go to the community and get significant amount of dollars without any tax, tax increase. We engaged the community, we did a facility assessment and I was, I was part, it was a collaborative effort, but I, I was a lead in a lot of the areas. We brought together a facility assessment team in which evaluated our buildings with, with our partner Barton Mallow. And we, we did a full facility assessment. It was about a 60-member team. We went through that process, we, we used Epic MRIA to do a survey of our district, our constituents, to say what will they, what's their tolerance for, for a new bond issue? And our hypothesis was that we were going to be able to get 200 and some million dollars for a no mil increase and we were going to work within the facility assessment to accomplish the goals set forth by the Facility Review Committee. It turns out our, there was a tolerance for, for a two mil increase. And so our board, our board took that under advisement and had the courage to put that before the voters and we passed a $555 million. It was only possible because we engaged all, all stakeholders. We had, we had advocates or we had people from each building representative on the, on the committee. And we, we collaborated around the idea, we set the, we ended up drafting what the bond application was going to, to look like and we passed, we passed the bond by, I think it was 60, 65% or so in November of 2022. That was a huge collaborative effort. How did it benefit our district? That is the exciting part. We are engaged right now in the process. We're engaged in the development of the, of the, of the projects. And our first one is building a new middle school. And to be able to vision with individuals on the next 50 years of public education is the most exciting work that we can do. And we believe, I mean, certainly to dream a little bit and to, to vision what that looks like and what a new building might look like and how furniture is going to affect instruction and how our playgrounds are going to provide outlets for, for students, that's been a powerful experience. So it's going to benefit the Troy School District for, for years to come. And it's all born out of a strategy that took about six years to develop and a lot of collaboration.
Effectively and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Please describe the type of communication students, staff, parents and the board should expect to receive from you.
Yeah, communication is paramount and, and as a parent, you know, we, I have expectations and quite frankly, you know, there's a tendency to flood our inboxes, right? So I think we need to really, really focus on what, what we're communicating, how we're communicating it and what media we're using to communicate it. And I think a multimedia platform is, is necessary. And I'm talking to students, staff and parents, okay? So with the board, let me, let me just focus on, on that for a quick, just a quick minute. I, I think board needs to, our board communication needs to be developed together. And the research I've done on all of you, I understand that you are probably, you're all busy people outside of your commitment to, to this work and, and I want to be efficient and effective with our time together. So I think developing a communication, a cadence of communication, a means of communication is going to be important. Certainly the superintendent doesn't want to annoy the board and I'm sure vice versa. So we, we will work collaboratively on what that looks like and, and how that, how that, how that's rolled out. And that's a part of my first 90-day plan, meeting with everybody, understanding your expectations. I've had board member, I've had board members over the years, a board president that said, a meeting started at 6:30 and said, I'll be home by 7 o'clock to watch the Red Wings. So, okay, that was, that was an expectation. I've had other board members that are perfectly, perfectly comfortable having four-hour board meetings. So, so, you know, there, I understand that managing seven people's expectation on communication is going to take some, say, take some time and take some collaboration. But as far as students, staff and parents, I, I would look forward to working with the communications department here and our administrative team and understanding what our, what our opportunities and challenges are with communications. I believe, and this is from a parent perspective, the most effective communications I receive are from teachers, right? I, I want to know what's going on in my kid's classroom. Second most is from the principal. They are the conduit to our, so what is our central office? And I believe part of our strategic plan, and I've said it already, we have to tell our story from a central office standpoint. We have to celebrate our successes and we, we have to push that out through a multimedia approach. So I would look forward to engaging in that process.
Thank you, President Hill. So my questions are on the topic of political awareness. Superintendents are often faced with challenges of making decisions when there is no clear right answer and members of the community are split on the right path forward. Talk about a time when you were faced with a difficult decision where you knew there was, there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision, whichever way you decided. How would you go about making the decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined was best?
I appreciate, I appreciate this, this question. A couple of things come to mind, maybe more justly, is I coordinate, you, you don't know this, but I coordinate the snow day calls for the Oakland County superintendents and it reminds me of every snow day call. So making those decisions and even with the community, right? I, I always look forward to coming in on a snow day call and, and hearing the call that, that people aren't happy about it. So. So that's, that's more justful in nature. I'll spare you the, the, the decisions made through COVID too. I think that was, that's an example of, of, oftentimes, and you, you know this from your service, there wasn't really an opportunity to make a right decision during that. So you were, you were making people upset. The one that comes to mind, as I think about this, we, we have a unique transportation str, a unique bell schedule in Troy School District. We have what we call a five-tier, five-tier system. We have our high school start time. We have our middle school, two middle school start times. We have four middle schools. Two of them start early, two of them start later. And then our twelve elementaries, six of them start earlier, six of them start later. That was born out of a necessity to reduce costs during the reductions back in two thousand and twelve, the major reduction. So we went to a five-tiered transportation system and that's how we accomplished it from a bell schedule. During that, the previous administration suggested that we would, in five years, we would flip the late start middle schools and late start elementaries to early. Okay? So it's a little bit convoluted because it's unique to Troy. But so we come in and I think it was, you know, two or three years into, to our leadership and this came to our attention that it was promised that we would flip it five years. So now we're talking eight of our, or twelve, sixteen of our buildings. Some of them were perfectly happy being the early start. And the ones that were late start were not at all happy. And they had, they had an expectation that it was flipping. Well, when we investigated, there, there is a lot of logistics with it. There's a lot of finances with it. There's staffing issues with it. And when we, when we really worked through that process, it, it didn't make sense for us to, to actually execute or administer this, the switch. So we had to bring people together and you want to talk about, I mean, we're talking half of the people were mad, half of the people directly answering the question. It, it was a very, very contentious time. And there's still people that, that are upset about this. They, they view it from an equity, equity lens. And, and it's, it's been a challenge. But what you do and to, to answer the latter part of the question is you have to stick to processes. There's process to decision. You collect information. You collaborate with individuals. And then you make a decision and you communicate that decision effectively. We were able to do that. And, and not everybody, we have to ask superintendents, as Board of Education, you know that, as administrators, as teachers, we all have to understand, we're not able to make everybody happy and we have to be comfortable in that. We have to get comfortable in that space.
Okay. So my next question is, please share a specific way, or not a, please share specific ways that our district could work with other districts to support learning for all students.
Yeah, we, one, there's no secret and there, there's really no, no unique work, work in this public education space. We have to engage with other school districts. I pride myself in being able to network. I pride myself in being able to develop relationships. Again, I've stated that a couple of times. I'm a relational individual. But we have to come together as a school, a larger public education community to solve our larger problems. And as your superintendent, I would make a commitment to do that. We have to engage with policymakers. We have to engage with, with civic organizations. We have to engage with other superintendents, with, with state, local, or with local, state, and federal officials. And I have been, I have been blessed with the opportunities to, to do that. I currently attend legislative, superintendent legislative breakfasts. I was just there a couple, a couple of days ago and I've done that over the course of my time at Royal Oak and at, at, and at Troy. So engaging with, with all, all different groups. And as it pertains specifically to, to other school districts, we have to look at peer districts too. Who, who's having similar experiences? Who has similar demographics? Who has similar, similar issues as Bloomfield Hills? We have to engage with them. I would make it a priority to, to form groups with, with those other superintendents. I would encourage our boards to, to seek, seek collaboration as well when, when appropriate and our administrators. We are better, the public education community, which I'm passionate about, is better together. I truly believe that. Although we are going to be focused, and as your leader, I'm going to be focused on achievement and experience of students in Bloomfield Hills, I do believe our experiences and our achievement can help improve student success elsewhere. And sharing those experiences and learning from others that are doing it well is going to be extremely important.
Thank you. My last question reads, what impact has the use of standardized testing results had on our education system in Michigan?
Well, I, I view standardized test results as perceptive data, which is important. I, I do believe it's important because I believe it's a large portion of how people evaluate what we're doing. How are we meeting state standards? How are kids achieving? What are, what are their growth? What are the gaps? I believe that's, that's all important. And, and I believe we will use that. And any data, for that matter, that is able to inform instruction and get down to the granular level to, to help inform, inform instructional practices is helpful. I don't think standardized tests do that. I think there's too much of a lag in order for it to be useful in that manner. So therefore it's more used for public perception, telling us how well we're doing or not doing as a state and educating our kids, telling Bloomfield Hills how well they're doing because of, because of tests on a specific day at a specific time. So I'm cautious in using it to, I would be cautious in using it for, for more than that. However, it is important as it relates to making sure that people are comfortable buying a house in Bloomfield Hills and sending their kid to, kid to Bloomfield Hills. I think, and maybe going a little bit deeper into this, I think there's opportunities. I think our focus should be on how are we, what data do we have internally? What systems are we using? What, to get data more readily close to our, our classrooms? To help the teacher inform their instruction and target interventions appropriately for students. So I think, and, and maybe, you know, using, I, I see Portrait of a Learner and I've seen it on the website and I've, I, I've looked at it, but evaluating us through that lens is probably more appropriate. And, and looking at our formative assessment data is probably a little bit more important to me than, than the summit of peace.
Treasurer Colan?
Thank you. Next question is regarding leadership attributes. What is the most difficult decision you've had to deal with in your educational career and how has it resulted?
Decision. I'm thinking, I don't know if this, the decision was that difficult, but, but the situation certainly was. I'm going to share, share a story because it was the most difficult experience that I have had. And it's, it's going, it's, I'll just name it, one of the districts. We had a very prominent figure get into some, some legal, legal issues that had to be investigated. And I was integral in that investigation and it resulted in, in termination and charges. The individual was, as I mentioned, a prominent, a prominent figure. And the, so it came with, there, there was a lack of trust from the investigation. There was a lack of trust, and I had only been there six months. But, but there was a lack of trust overarching because there was, this person was beloved. And it wasn't a difficult decision to get to the, to, to do the, press the charges and, and move along. That was the right thing to do. The difficult thing was to have information. And oftentimes this happens as central office administrators, as Board of Educations, we have an information advantage, right? We have more information than we can share oftentimes because we have to protect the dignity and the confidentiality of all of the situations. And so we, we were at a deficit from information sharing. So I mentioned earlier, when people don't have information, they make, they make up their own stories. So between investigation to charges, it was a long, long period of time, six months. So there was upheaval in the, in the organization. There was upheaval in the community. There was, there was student marches on central office. There were parents stacking the board, board meetings. There were, there was an intensity around this, this issue when we had facts and truth and we were unable to share. We knew at the appropriate time, the facts and the truth would come out and they did. But the amount of healing that had to occur and the amount of time it took in order to do that, in order to restore our trust and to, in order to restore relationships that were fractured. It ended up being quite, you know, I, I told you, I was there six months. It ended up, you know, being a large part of the work for the, for the remainder of my time in that district. And it was just an incredibly, incredibly difficult, difficult situation. Decision wasn't that difficult, but the situation was. And we run into that. I know, you know, through my research and through being a neighboring district, that, that Bloomfield Hills has had some, some challenges. That, and, and healing is, is necessary and relationship restoration is important. And those are things I think, given my experiences, will be an attribute to, to my leadership.
What are the key elements needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship between you and the board?
Well, I think the, the key, the key elements, I think the key elements of any relationship are built on trust and respect. And it's in my, it's in my plan as well. I mentioned it in a previous, previous answer too. I will spend considerable amount of time in my first ninety days cultivating a strong working relationship with, with board governance and with our really working relationship together. So that's, and it's going to be one built on. I, I, I think the tenets of trust and, and respect are being authentic, being genuine, being honest. All, all of those, those things go into it. And I think, you know, I, I certainly bring that and I think there's plenty in, in your packet too. There's people attesting to, to my character and who I am and how I work. And, and, and bringing that to our relationship is going to be critically important. And I, again, I look forward to, I, I've worked for, again, three school districts, several. I, I've lost count of how many actual board members. I have had excellent relationships with each, each one of them. I pride myself in that. And, and they have, they have respect for me. I have respect for them. And it will be, it will be my work to, to make sure that we, we have a strong, strong relationship built on those two elements.
How do you inspire and engage the entire school community in support of the district's vision and mission?
I think a lot of that, I, I talked about in my long-term, long-term planning. I, I would love to lead the process of a strategic plan here. And, and I think about how am I inspired? What, what matters to me? How, how do I get inspired to, to act? And, you know, some of the, some of the key tenets of that, you know, you have to engage. You have to engage folks. You have to engage stakeholders in the process. You have to model the expectations. When I see some, my, my boss, I work for the best superintendent in the state. I'm convinced of that. And he models the expectations of the group. And it's, you know, it's, it's powerful. And then you empower, empower people to do the work. You provide them the development. You provide them the, you, you set the expectations collaboratively. You, and then you empower them to do the work. Resource them to do the work. Get out of their way and let them do the work. So, so those are, and then it goes to the communication plan as, plan as well. You have to be able to communicate it. You have to be able to celebrate the successes. You have to, you have to circle back, feedback loops. Making sure they understand. Never lose sight of the vision. Never lose sight of the strategic plan. Continue to, continue to communicate it. Make sure it's in front of people. And just, just watch that. That's what's inspired me. And we are on our second iteration of our strategic plan and I can tell you, and Troy, people know it. People know the, the four pillars, we call them. And it's because we were intentional in bringing people, engaging people in the process, modeling the expectations and then empowering them to do, do the work. So it's, it's been exciting. So that's a similar process that we, we would do to make sure that people are inspired to continue to, to do the work here, here in Troy. The work being making sure that our student achievement and student experience is as powerful as it can be.
Trustee Coomer?
Yep. So, Mr. Wash, I've got the next set of three questions on instruction and curriculum. So my first question, what experience and success have you had with closing achievement gap for economically disadvantaged and minority students?
Again, drawing on the wide array of experiences I've had with the three school districts, I can say it is, it's much more challenging. Atherton Community Schools was a, had a free and reduced lunch rate of over ninety percent. So we weren't as focused on the gap as we were achievement because the, the higher, the higher the achievement, the greater the gap. So in Troy, for instance, we have, we're a high achieving, high expectation district. So our gaps require more focus. It has been and is a continual focus of our cabinet team, which I, I serve, I, I serve on. We are focused right now on what, what our multi-tiered systems of support are, are going to be. How are we going to, how are we going to deliver tier-one instruction differently? Making sure, how, what data are we going to use in order to, to assess where our gaps are? And that's been, that's been a focus of, of our current, of our current team right now. I also serve, I'm one of a seven-member team of our Equity Inquiry Team. And we are currently in our first year of our landscape analysis and we focused on belonging and the, the student experience. And right now we're, we're collecting data and we're excited to, to move into year two. But we're, we're focused on this right now. So I, I don't have specific success. I could go back to Atherton where I was actually, it was such a small district. I was the grant writer. I was, I was integral in building the systems of support with our grant dollars in order to improve, this was before the third grade reading laws, but improve reading for, for our minority and economically disadvantaged students. But more relevant is probably my experience that, that I'm talking about here in Troy. So we are, it's a current focus of, of our district. We, you know, in, in education, the, the data or the longitudinal data is, we have to wait a long time in order to see whether or not we're making improvements, right? And, and some of the areas. So this would be a focus. The focus of, this would be a focus of my administration here is making sure. I did do some, some analysis on the gaps here. And I know there's great opportunities to really focus in on what our instructional practices are, what our tier-one, tier-one and tier-two instruction is, what systems of support do we have in place? And worked collaboratively with our Learning Services Team, our Special Education Team, and making sure that we identify where those gaps are and what instructional practices we can put into place to, to shrink that gap.
Next question is, what is the biggest risk you've taken to do what's right for our children?
Biggest risk? Well, let me tell you, one of the most powerful things that, that I've experienced, when I was hired into Troy, I was handed a card was hired into Troy, I was handed a card that said, "Take a risk, dare to fail." That was the mantra of our superintendent in his opening year. Take a risk, dare to fail. So, first, let me tell you, we have to create a culture where risk-taking is okay. That's where progress is made. That's where we can make movement. So, that comes to mind first. We have to be risk-takers. And that's not my natural, natural instinct is to be risky. But, I do think we have to create a culture where that's okay. To answer the question though, what's coming to mind is, we built a state-of-the-art 72,000-square-foot preschool. And we did, that started also, coincidentally, it started in 2016, two years after I received this card of "Take a risk, dare to fail," our superintendent. And it was part of our pillar work that we wanted to create a, create a preschool, create high-quality preschool experience for all of our, for all of our community. So, he comes into my office with, with our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction, and he says, "We're going to build a preschool." I said, "Okay, how are we going to pay for said preschool?" And he said, "I trust you'll figure it out." And this is exactly how the conversation went. I said, "Whoa." So, this is, it ended up being a cool experience. But, we, the risk was, we were building a preschool on a "build it and they will come" strategy. That doesn't work for, for my background necessarily, but that was the direction. We closed the doors. The superintendent left. We closed the door and we actually, we created a similar process to the bond. We collaborated. We, we identified a director that was going to be able to lead the work because the goal was to provide a high quality preschool experience. It wasn't to build a preschool, right? So, we, we got the right director in place. Then we, we went to work. The financial strategy, which was primarily my responsibility, the board was open to some, some general obligation debt. However, we also sat on a lot of vacant property. So, we developed a strategy where we were going to offload some of our vacant property. We, we were able to sell, I think, over 16, 17 million dollars worth of property. It was at the boom. We set new, new records for, for property sales and prices. And we generated about 17 million dollars toward a $24 million state-of-the-art preschool. We opened that thing in 2019. We opened the preschool in 2019, and we had a couple hundred students in it. And then the pandemic hit. And we had a, we had a, the other goal was, it was going to be self-sustaining. So, we were going to generate enough revenue from the tuition to pay for the debt payment. And we, we opened the building in 2019, and then in March of 20, the pandemic hit. So, the board was very comfortable covering the general obligation debt for a couple of years. That place, I, it's a point of pride in Troy, and it's a point of pride of my work. It's currently over 600, I think, 600 students and several different programs there. So, it's been just a success. They have a fun balance that is appropriate. They are, and we are living into our second iteration of our strategic plan. And we have more kids accessing high-quality preschool than ever before. So, that was, but at the front end, that was an extreme risk that we took from a financial strategy standpoint.
Thank you. My last question, what do you believe are the current, are currently the biggest challenges with special education in our region? And how should these challenges be addressed?
Yeah. Couple, couple things here where, when we're talking about our special education population. I think post-pandemic, we're really seeing, we're really seeing behaviors that we haven't seen. So, identification of EI, our EI population. Over the past decade, we've certainly seen a spike in our autism classes. And finding highly qualified people to fill those positions and then retain them because of some of the experiences is, is a significant, significant challenge. The other, and that's more categorical rooms, if you will, that's, that's a challenge that exists there. I think the other, the other challenge that is worth messaging here is that we, we have to find a way, and this goes to the equity, equity issues. We have to find a way to make sure that our IEPs tie to tier-one instruction and kids are in least restrictive environments. That has to, that needs to be a focus. I would be interested in sitting down with the special education department here and making sure that there is some cohesion and some coherence between our general education instruction and our special education instruction. We're wrestling with this right now as a cabinet when we're talking about economically disadvantaged and minority students too. We bring in special education and the access to the curriculum. And are we, do we have high expectations for them, for our special education students? Do we have, do we expect high achievement? Do we, do they have access to the same rigor? Do they have access to our tier-one instruction? And those are, those are things that, that we're wrestling with. So, but, but they are challenges. So, I think those two things are, need to be addressed. And we need to figure out collaboratively, what is the best way to address those.
For a trustee father?
Evening. Thank you for spending some time with us. I have a couple of questions on finance. First is, how would you ensure that our district's spending is aligned with our priorities?
I mentioned this long-term strategy of developing a strategic plan. Tying resource allocation to a strategic plan is a powerful process. And that's something that I think, think we need to do. If we're going to say, you know, given you the example in Troy, that we are focused on the social, emotional, physical well-being of all of our students, what does that mean from a resource allocation? How are we servicing those students? How are we going to accomplish that? Another thing is, we are invested in, in the development of our staff. That's, that's one of our key tenants. That requires resource allocation. What is our professional development model going to look like? How much resources are we going to spend in here? Now, education, we're, you know, it said we can't be that creative because we're capped at our foundation allowance times the amount of kids. Those are the resources we have. We're predominantly 90%, 95% in, you know, staffing and benefits. So, there's very little discretionary. So, we are a people organization. So, when we talk about priorities, we have to look at, look at people and programs. And, because there's not a lot of discretionary to keep the lights on, and not to bring that up tonight, but we, we have, we have to make sure it's aligned with our goals, our vision, mission, values, and goals. Setting down and doing that collaboratively, working with the finance staff, working collaboratively with our building principals, our directors, is important. Engaging people in the process is, is an important tenant to, to making sure that they're aligned. Communicating what it is we expect and, and how it is we're going to align the resource allocation with, with our priorities.
Thank you. Next question is, what opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? And in tough financial times, what are your top three priorities?
Yeah, certainly, budget limitations present an opportunity to focus our direction, right? What really matters? What, what are we doing? Again, what, what is, what is our, our strategic plan? Fall back on our vision, our mission, our values, our goals? How, so, when you're in, and I have been, I've been in the Great Recession. I've been a business official during the Great Recession. And in fact, it wasn't until 2020 that I felt like we, in the federal influx of cash, that I felt like we're really making progress. But, so, so it is, the budget limitation does present an opportunity to really make sure you're focusing a direction as an organization on what really matters. So, what are the, what are the top priorities? We are an educational institution. We're a learning, we are a learning organization. Our job is to transfer knowledge to, to our youth. And in order to do that, you have to have qualified staff. So, the top priority has to be recruitment and retention of highly qualified staff. We cannot lose focus on that, on that issue. As it relates to, so, we also have to be transparent in the process. If, if we're going to have to tighten our belts, we, you know, the community's going to have to know. We're going to have to communicate. We're going to have to be transparent in the process. So, recruitment, retention is, is a top priority. Operationally, you know, certainly, we have to focus on, on building, building energy efficiencies, energy usage. And then, you know, the sustainability piece, right? What programs do we have in place? And what might we be able to do less of? Or how do we do fewer things better? And so, we, you know, that's, that would be all driven from what we set our priorities as, from a strategic, strategic visioning standpoint.
Thank you. Last question from me is, please describe your experiences with millennial's, bond proposals, and sinking fund proposals. And were these experiences successful? Why or why not?
Well, I shared the most successful one, which was a 555 million dollar. But, over my 16-plus years, it feels like I've been part of, part of one of these three funding mechanism strategies. We were unsuccessful in Atherton with a, with a bond proposal. So, I have had that experience and taken away some, some learning from, from that failure. And one thing I guess I should acknowledge, I am acutely aware because we are going through the same thing that we have a, that Bloomfield Hills has a Hold Harmless and Operation Millage Renewal that I think is, is going to become, come before you here soon. So, I think part of my, part of my 90-day plan includes making sure that that's a success in August. I think it equates to over 30, 30-some million dollars. So, when you equate that over the 20 years, we're going to ask for our constituents to pay for that significant amount of dollars. And it's exceedingly important. So, I'm acutely familiar with, and, you know, all of these funding mechanisms. We passed a sinking fund proposal in, the first sinking fund proposal in Royal Oak when I was there. Again, we used the same collaborative process, brought community in, had an informational campaign, made sure people understood. And then, in the bond proposals, the, I inherited a 125 million dollar bond proposal when I got to Troy, and then we passed the historic one there in 2022. So, they were, I've had success in, in two of the three districts with passing these millages, being an instrumental part of the team, not only the information gathering, but engaging with community members in, in the successful passage. So, I would look forward to looking strategically thinking with, with the board, strategically thinking with the community, engaging the community on what opportunities might exist here. I know there's a sinking fund. And I know the, the millage renewals are going to be before. I know we're four years into the 2020 bond. And, and those projects are well underway and successful. But, future planning, because I plan to be here a long time if I'm a successful candidate, we would look for those opportunities, engage in strategic thinking around what those opportunities and when those opportunities may exist.
Thanks for the answers so far. And I'm going to ask you some questions on staff and personnel. So, the first question is, how would you interact with other administrators in our district? How would you strike a balance between giving them the support and autonomy they need to lead effectively while holding them accountable as appropriate and necessary?
Yeah, it goes back to the inspiration, right? I'm going to model, model the leadership I expect. I'm going to engage with them. I'm going to walk beside them. And then, we're going to set goals together and we're going to hold, hold each other accountable for them. I like to think that, I do coach my three kids. I like to think I'm a player's coach. And as such, you know, I'll be a superintendent that, you know, has strong working relationships with our administrators. Our district administrators are building administrators. We have some great building administrators in Troy. They are the conduit to our community, right? I am going to be visible. I'm going to be accessible to them and to our community. But, they are the conduit in a lot of ways to our community. So, we need to lean on them. And we do lean on them quite heavily to carry messages, to, you know, to carry the strategic plan and, and all of that to really, they're closer to the work in a lot of ways. So, empowering them to do the work, resourcing them appropriately to accomplish the goals that we've set forth. And then, somewhat getting out of their way and letting them do the work, empowering them to do so, is kind of the strategy that I'll work. Nobody likes a micromanager. I'm certainly not going to be that. I can delegate nicely, but we will be walking together in the work. I'll be accessible and visible to them. And we'll, we'll work together toward, toward the goals that we set.
Thank you. Please describe your most successful experience of building a high-performing work team.
This again is something I pride, pride myself on. And I think one of the biggest compliments that, that we could have had in Troy is I have an interim finance director for obvious reasons right now. And it's a retired individual, and he, he's been with us a couple of months now. He's told me a couple of times, he's, he said, "Boy, I would have never retired if I had this team." In order to build a team like that, you have to create a culture around it. And I think in my application, I'm very proud of the fact that I was named the 2016 Business Official of the Year. And I'm not so much egotistical about the award, but the meaning behind it was because I was able to establish a culture, a culture where people want to work. So, I'm exceedingly proud of, of my ability to build teams. The, the way you build a successful team is you recruit talented people. I often, and it's really not a joke, but you hire smarter people and you let them do their work. And that's really the key to a success of any leader, I believe. I genuinely believe that. So, I recruit. We find people that are humble, hungry, and smart. We develop them. We provide them opportunities for growth. And again, we get out of their way and let them do their work. And then, we support them. We hold them accountable. You know, I, one thing I'm very proud of, and Candace being the last one, every single one, I, you know, I've been a chief business official my entire, entire career. Every single number two, if you will, accountant, in some cases, finance directors and others, have gone on to be a chief financial officer. So, I attribute that to some of the culture that we've done, some of the development, some of the opportunities that we provide individuals. And they're, they haven't only gone on to be, take the, take the first seat in the finance offices, but they've also been very successful. And, you know, I think that's, that's the mark of good leadership. That's what we should be empowering. But, as far as the, the other staff, you know, I have a lot of direct reports. And I've had a lot of stability because I believe you create the culture where people want to come to work. And you recruit good people and you, you let them do, do what they do best.
How would staff members in your district describe you?
You know, you're not going to have to guess at that. I have put a number of, a number of nice letters of recommendation. I have put a number of, a number of nice letters of recommendation. But I think here, one of my mantras really in life, nobody cares what you know till they know that you care. And I would say that, that people believe and think and would suggest that I care. I care deeply. I care deeply about them as humans, as, as people, as parents, as spouses, you know, I care about them as an individual. And in my recruitment efforts, I don't much focus on that. I focus on their talents, and I trust that they're going to do the work. But then, then we develop strong relationships where we actually know one another. And we, we have a tremendous, I think I have a tremendous sense of humor. We bring a lightheartedness culture to the work. I take myself very, or I, I take the work very seriously, but not myself. I think I'm genuine. I think they would say I'm genuine. I'm authentic. And I'm honest. I'm a person of, of high integrity. And, and that's one thing, that's another mantra besides the one I just told you. I believe our integrity is the only thing we take with us. So it's imperative that, that we maintain a strong sense of, sense of integrity and are grounded in our own beliefs. And I think people would attest, attest to that. And one of the best compliments I had, and I, and I understand that the unions here and they can attest to it, our union leadership, our union president, I talked to him because I know unions talk to one another just to see what he would actually say. And, and, you know, he, he not only endorsed me, but he said, you know, you're very trustworthy. So, and, and that's built on, you know, I think that's, that's my reputation around Troy. And I would encourage anybody, anybody watching, any board member, you guys to reach out to board members over at Troy, anybody, reach out to your counterpart at, at Troy and ask them. And, and I think you'll find endorsements and attest, attest to my character.
Thank you. So thank you for your responses to the questions we have prepared for this first round interview. We would like to take a few minutes now to provide you with an opportunity to ask any questions you might have for the board. And for frame of reference, there are 26 minutes left on the clock.
Excellent. Well, I will, I, I only have, let me, let me make sure that's accurate. Yeah, I'm just going to ask one, and if one of you want to, or a couple of you want to answer it, that'd be great. What do you believe is the greatest opportunity facing, opportunity or challenge facing Bloomfield Hills Schools?
Well, there's so many, right? So how do you pick? So I guess from where we sit, I would say uplift the community with trustworthy leadership that, as you said, you know, is continuous. There's been a lot of change. We are incredibly grateful for the interim leadership that we've had. Our interim leaders have done an excellent job. However, you know, I think that someone in the permanent role to establish relationships that are assured are going to be long-term and just, just unify people. There's just been so much just leftover, I think, from the COVID era of negativity. And I feel that it's in a trajectory that is positive. I can feel it. But I think the thing that would really solidify that is a, is a solid leader who can make relationships. Of course, there's a ton we're concerned about, about other things, you know, worried about the budgetary implications coming our way and into all of public education and things like that. But just a leader who, you know, inspires the community, and then for the staff is someone that they're excited to work for.
I mean, I, I don't like to usually be too playful with words, but I think, you know, if you look at what we think is our strength, one of our great strengths, which is the many opportunities that we have in our district. We offer, you know, from, from the different co-curriculars we have, we have all these amazing programs. We offer pretty much anything under the sun that you can think of for a student to be able to find their passion and curiosity, which ultimately is what allows a student to be successful, is when they can latch onto something that means something to them. That's how they find that ability to be successful because they're passionate about it. So we have that. But that often is a challenge because when you have so many things, how do you provide alignment with strategic direction for all of those things? We have, I mean, you know, just so many different things going on. Sometimes when I'm looking at updates in our board packets, I still find things I'm like, oh, we do that? You know, I just like, there's so many different opportunities, but that's also a challenge. And so I think the opportunity here is, is to take that challenge and, and put some strategy behind it, put some direction behind it. This is the opportunity to take those different groups and get them aligned with from the top. Where are we going? What do we need to get there together? What resources are we showing that are successful? What are the ones that we need to talk about and understand a little bit deeper? And this is the time to do it. So yes, it's a challenge, but it's an opportunity to really get a hold of it and take us to where we need to be. You mentioned, you know, trustee Kumar mentioned, maybe I'm putting words in wrong, somebody mentioned the strategic plan at some point. But this really is a time for it where we're not in peril, but it's a real turning point, I feel like, in our district where there's opportunity, but yet it's a challenge to get behind. Thank you.
I'll jump in. I think what we need, I think in the last couple of years, there's been a significant positive turn. There's been a lot of turnover at the leadership, at the cabinet level. And what I think around the district, mostly from our staff and even our community members, is we need stability. So to, to lead, and I think in the last couple of years, and I've witnessed it, I've been the longest-serving board member, I think as a group here, working with administration, we've seen significant change, obviously in our building infrastructure. But I think what we need is someone stable, building a team, a cohesive team, and then having that stability. That's going to resonate with the rest of the community and the rest of the staff, and that's what we need.
Thank you.
If I could jump on to what our president and vice president and treasurer said. We've got the building blocks in place. We've got the facilities. We've got the support from our community. We need to pull together a plan to continue on that positive trajectory and, and, you know, take education Bloomfield to the next level.
Anyone else? All right. We have 21 minutes remaining. Is there anything you'd like to add or conclude?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just conclude with the fact, again, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I do really view this as perhaps a once-in-a-career opportunity to lead an institution of, of high success, high achievement, high expectations. I believe my skills, I believe my experiences, I believe the opportunities I've been provided align with the opportunities that exists here. I can tell you that this is the only job, the only superintendency that I have sought to, to date. Because I choose, we get to choose what we believe aligns best with who we are and, and the opportunities that exist. And I would be delighted to, to serve as the next superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools. I, this is about, I, I mentioned it once or several times, this is about generational impact for kids. I have a long career ahead of me, and I am looking to lead at a high level and make generational impact, have a positive impact on the next generation of kids. Having it be in Bloomfield Hills where I know the resources are available, the success, the building blocks are, are there, that maybe some coherence can be brought to it. I think I'm up for the task, and I would be honored to, to move along in this process and then ultimately serve as your superintendent. So again, thank you all. Thank you all for this opportunity. I wish you the best. I have left you with my entry plan in both a written that has more details as well as a presentation format. I know that you have over, or less than 48 hours of deliberation time. I encourage you to look at that along with the, the letters that have been in there that can attest to my work, can attest to my leadership, can attest to my character. And I hope on Friday you draw the conclusion that I'm worthy to move forward. So I appreciate your time and wish you all the best in your selection process.
Thank you, Mr. West. We appreciate your interest in the superintendent position for Bloomfield Hills Schools. We will be interviewing a total of four, well, we've now concluded interviewing a total of four candidates this week. The board will then convene a special meeting this Friday, April 19th, at 5:30 p.m. to determine the next step for the finalist interviews. Following that meeting, Mr. Stein will contact you to let you know where you stand in our search process. Thank you for your participation in this first round interview. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, do we, that concludes section three of the agenda. We're going to move to section four where we're going to have a discussion with Tim Stein. Do we want to take a three-minute recess before we do that, or we just want to go through it?
I don't need a break.
Go through it. All right. All right. So moving on to section four, closing comments. I'll state briefly, the Board of Education will hold a special meeting, as I just stated, this Friday, April 19th, at 5:30 p.m. here at the Booth Center to determine which candidates will be invited to participate in second round interviews. Tim Stein, our representative from MLI, is present this evening, and we're going to talk through a couple of the details related to Friday's meeting.
So you have homework. That was a perfect segue from, from Rick. You've got application, you've got a resume, you've got a cover letter, you have a 30-day or a 90-day plan, you have feedback from your community. You have a lot of information to go through. When you come in on Friday, I will have the board set up similar to what we did the last time. Your goal is to be able to pick two candidates, and it'll be a tough choice, but you want to limit it to two. We'll go through the process, we'll do the tally. You know, the potential exists that you might have a tie. Mathematically, you're going to have one candidate, at least one candidate that stands out. Sometimes it just works out and two are, you know, just pop out naturally. But there's a potential that you could have a tie at the, for two. So then you might have to talk through that. So we'll, I'll lead you through that, and we'll go through that process if that happens, similar to what we did in, in the first round. Following that, I will go, following the tally and the motion, and the successful motion, I will go out and call because there still is a potential that I call somebody and they could say, you know what, I just, my superintendent just talked to me and he said he's going to retire and I'm going to take that job. So I will come back in. I don't anticipate any of that. I will come back in and give you the thumbs up, like, similar to what I did the last time. During that time, you'll have an opportunity to look at questions for the final round. I have a book of questions that I've sent to Rebecca, she has for you. You can create your own questions this time if you want to. You don't have, but there's a plethora of questions that are available to you to pick. We typically go for, I suggest, two questions per candidate. This is a shorter interview. But part of the interview process, too, is also presentation. So you can see them presenting, because a big part of their role is going to be presenting to your community and presenting to your staff. So you want to see them in that process. So be thinking about a topic that makes sense in a 20-minute presentation for you. We talked a little bit about funding, you know, the looming funding cliff that everybody's talking about right now. I know I would be thinking about that if I was sitting in the superintendent's seat right now. What are we going to do when the federal money goes away? How are we going to dig in? It would be an opportunity for you to see their thinking and their presentation skills during that time, too. So we limit that meeting to 60 minutes, between a 20-minute presentation and about 40 minutes for them to respond to your, to your questions, so.
As a reminder, we've got the dates scheduled for Wednesday, May 1st, and Thursday, May 2nd. We've drafted potential itineraries that the board will approve on Friday after reviewing for a full day in the district on each of those days with an hour or so break for the candidates before a second round interviewing that evening.
And that's going to give you more information, too, because there are times in that schedule for stakeholder groups, you know, to give you, have an opportunity to meet with the candidates in addition to you and your opportunity to see the candidates in the district also.
The superintendent search commit, subcommittee consisting of trustee, Southwood and trustee Kumar and myself, we did review some preliminary itineraries. We'll circulate those to the board before Friday so that we can, everyone can review and have input before we vote on what is a final itinerary. There will be significant opportunity for community involvement and participation that day, and we can discuss the final details around that on Friday, this Friday. All right. Any other items you think, housekeeping items that we need to? As Michelle alluded earlier, our guiding light, Rebecca, do you have any? She keeps us in, she keeps us in order, that's for sure. Trustee Kumar.
So for the meetings on the first, the, the presenting of the second round, the first and the second, so there's a 20-minute presentation followed by 40 minutes of questions?
When you get to the, so this is at the, in the very last part of the day, you know, they'll come into the room, they'll have a 20-minute presentation on a topic you select. Then we'll give them a 30-second or break to sit down for a minute, and then you'll go into your interview. It should be about an hour, typically lasts 45 minutes.
So, so the questions on, so my second question's on the interview. Similar to the first round, is there going to be a short list of pre-selected questions?
You'll have a script just like you had this interview, too.
Okay.
So you, but you're going to, you know, you were really good about, in that first round, which is typical, picking questions from the list. This is your opportunity. If you don't find a question in this big category, or a catalog of questions, you have a specific question maybe, then you, if you submit that, we'll make sure that that's on all the scripts also, too. So you, you potentially could pick two questions, Siva. Tarek could pick two questions that are not on the list but are something that you want to have answered, and we'll create a script from that. I'll create it and send it to Rebecca, and she'll have you look at it, make sure it's consistent with what you were wanting to ask.
So is it, the max is 14 questions? So my question is, is that we, one of the things, and I know we've talked about this last two days, we have a student intern, we have, you know, students to the board. So I know our committee met with them and they would have an opportunity, and I don't care, I can give up my questions, that they're going to come up with two questions. Are we limited to 14 questions, or can one of the representatives come and ask the two student questions as well?
No, you could do that. You certainly could do that. But you're going, they're going to have an opportunity during the stakeholder meetings to, to ask questions directly to the candidates, too.
No, I, I understand that, but I think as part of this process, we can decide as a board if we wanted to do that as well.
No, you could do that. Yep.
Yep.
Well, I guess I'll ask Friday, but.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to clarify for anybody watching who missed it at the beginning, we do have a, we have feedback available, and we want to clarify when that closes. That'll close, yeah, for, so anyone who interested in giving electronic feedback, you can go to our website, you can find it there, but it's bloomfield.org/feedback. And that will be open for feedback, which goes into a portal where you have the option to provide your name or not. You can be anonymous, and only board members have access to seeing what that feedback is, and that will, portal will close at 4:00 p.m. this Friday.
Did we send something out about that today?
Yes.
Okay.
But I also turned to email for your consideration to send tomorrow once the board recordings are up.
Yeah.
Given the, I kicked ass with the power, just today I had an idea of reporting to my. make, to where those videos are and then provide another link to the feedback section row. So I did share, Rebecca did share with you for your consideration.
Ma'am?
So because Karen wasn't on microphone, I will just state that what she said was that we are going to, once tomorrow, all the live recordings are ready to release, there will be another release sent out to the district, which will include the information and instructions on how to provide feedback.
Is, and again, going back to my point, so it's going out to the district. Will it also be released, like, within, let's just say, the student community within, let's just say, the high school? You know, I'm just saying, how will students be able to get those details as well?
Yeah, so it is sent to all employees and guardians of our students. We can certainly send it to, like, all high school students or all students, whatever.
And the staff, too? So like the bloomfield.org email?
Yes. Yes.
So is it likely to go to all high school students, for example, or high school male students, school students?
I would.
Yeah. Do we know what time the videos will be ready?
Initially, it'd be option to be a couple of hours, but given that we're able to live stream it, I anticipate we'll be able to have it by like 10 or 11 tomorrow morning. As soon as we get them from technology, we can send that email.
We anticipate being able to, again, because Karen doesn't have a microphone, we anticipate being able to release it around 10 or 11 tomorrow morning. Okay.
And then, and I mean, Michelle was just talking about this. So do we want to decide now, or at least talk about it as a board so we could put it potentially in the schedule if May 1st and 2nd are the two dates that we're going to interview the second-round candidates? Are we okay, as a board, having the students come here, come up as a group, however they decide, and the committee can coordinate with the students, two questions, and then have them ask the questions?
I am not opposed personally to that happening. I just want to think about the mechanics of how they'll agree on the questions and how they'll be reviewed and decided upon, and I would like some time to sort of think through that and maybe make a final decision on Friday. Does anyone have any thoughts on it, on what that could look like, just to help me?
Logistically, I agree with you regarding, like, looking at the questions and make sure that it's appropriate. But I think for time's sake, to just make sure they are, they're able to be here on those dates, I'd love to at least give them a courtesy to know, hey, we have May 1st and 2nd, who's able to attend. If we know that we want to have them present, to give them a heads up in case they can't be, they're not available. Because they have schedules, too.
And then we could coordinate with them and let them come up with a good plan with, you know, maybe some help from the administration of the high school on how they're going to collaborate and come up with the questions, which we will make sure we'll review and then have them be here, so.
I think they could also quickly, I mean, they could figure it out. I know they've already been talking about it because we, we met with them and said, it's probably, they probably already have ideas, and then on top of it, we don't have to have all of them here necessarily.
No, I don't think all of them could make it here.
Exactly. So one or two.
One or two, they could send a representative to ask the question.
If you want me to include the questions with the student's name on the scripts, we could even do that also, if you send me the questions.
Yeah, that would be good. I think, yeah, once we, once we speak to them, they'll come up with questions, I'm sure they'll be fine. We'll make sure we, as a collaborative board, are okay with the questions they're going to ask, and then, yeah, include them in the script.
You'll have the same students each night.
We'll have to, they'll have to decide. We'll have to see what their schedule is, but.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we can just think through it, but I definitely want to, I definitely support their participation in providing questions.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other? Oh, we have to.
Do we need to also tell them when the questions are due? So when would you like for the students to submit the questions to Paul so we can get those questions better?
Well, I mean, we're going to decide on our questions, I think, Friday.
Friday.
But that's not enough notice for them, I think, because they haven't been working with them. So when is the next, when's your next board liaison meeting?
With them? I mean, I could, you know, I could reach out. I think, I think if we give them the weekend, you know, we have till Friday, give them the weekend to collaborate with each other and come up. So let's just say by end of day Monday?
Yeah, let's try that. Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good. Okay, any other comments as we conclude section 4A? Okay, moving on to section 5, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Anything else anyone wants to raise? No? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
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 Thank you.